Marco.
Navarro.
Navarro.
Sarfien Tanvier.
Sarfien. Hold on. Everybody ready? Okay. Sorry. I'm not. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this regular planning board meeting on February 27, 2025. Madam Secretary, can you please call roll?
Mrs. Parker.
Present.
Mr. Kestner. Mr. Lilly.
Here.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Mr. Camudi. Mr. Deal.
Here.
Councilman Roman. Manager O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mayor Timbora.
Present.
Vice Chair Fesche.
Here.
Chair Pearson.
Here.
Board Attorney Mazzara.
Here.
Engineer Marco Navarro.
Here.
And engineer Sarfien Tanvier.
Here.
Okay, can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? If you can. As you're able.
The allegiance in the United States of America, in the Republic of West United, one nation, under God, individual liberty, justice, all.
I apologize. Just an announcement, general announcement. Tonight's planning board agenda has been changed and One Wedge Would Drive will not be heard this evening. Only 60 Pompton Avenue will be heard this evening. One Wedge Would Drive was rescheduled due to a notice issue for March 27th, exactly a month from this evening, right here at 7:30 PM. So if anybody was here for that application, I apologize. The agendas get changed occasionally and they go right back up on the website with those edits. Also. Oh, can you read the Open Public Meetings Act?
The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied with respect to this meeting of the Township of Verona Planning Board, which is being held in person in the ballroom of the Verona Community Center located at 880 Bloomfield Avenue, Verona. The time and date of this meeting were included in the annual meeting notice posted in the community center and sent to the official newspaper of the township, the Verona Cedar Grove Times, at least 48 hours preceding the start of this meeting. The agenda and instructions on how to comment will be provided at the appropriate time. All meetings are recorded. Those wishing to speak during any public comment period should only provide their name and municipality. Street addresses are not required. Please be advised that should a member of the public choose to state their street address, it will not be redacted from the recording.
And I'd like to thank Kathleen for showing up for us this evening. Ms. Kester has stepped down from the position. And no great surprise, Kathleen saved us this evening. So thank you very much. We really appreciate you. At this time, I will open for public participation anything that a member of the public wants to state, not including what's on the agenda. There'll be time for that after the case comes forth. But if there's anybody that has anything else that they'd like to ask a question about or make a statement about. Seeing none? Oh, okay, sure. Just come up to the microphone and state your name and you don't have to state your address, just your town.
Can I bring up 383 Bloomfield Avenue? Or do I have to wait?
It's not on the agenda, so.
Okay, it's on the agenda for memorialization tonight.
For. Okay. Yes, would you please state your name?
Okay, I can speak now then or wait?
Yes, you can speak now, of course.
Scott Permer, Verona. Yes, I'd like to bring up 383 Bloomfield Avenue that was voted on last week, the resolution. That is improperly designated and invalid under NJSA 40A 12A-5D. I listened to the planners' report. I listened to discussions from the board. And I don't, does anybody on the board know of a class action case, or not a class actions case, a case law regarding Malanga versus Township of West Orange? It was 2023 Supreme Court decision. It went from Superior Court and Malanga was overruled. It went to the appellate court. Malanga was overruled. It went to the Supreme Court on a writ and basically Marango was victorious on that. It basically said that NJSA 40A 12A-5D, which was the same criteria that you guys had last week, was not valid. What that said was, and I'll read it to you. Accordingly, municipalities and redevelopers intending to rely upon NJSA 40A 12A-5D to fulfill the LRHL's original purpose of improving residents' quality of life and spurring economic opportunities must be cognizant of the Malanga decision. The parties must ensure that the municipal record contains substantial evidence of the two statutory criteria. Specifically, the municipal record must contain substantial evidence. First one, that the buildings or improvements located within the proposed redevelopment area suffer from at least one of the following conditions: dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, deleterious land use or obsolete layout. And two, that there is actual harm, actual harm, not presumed harm, but actual harm to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community resulting from the condition found to exist. Thus, the municipal record must show causation between the condition and the actual harm. The two statutory requirements cannot be separated. And the court found in reaching this holding, the court noted that the property was still functional, in use, and attracting 150 visitors a day. The Malanga-West Orange case happened to do with a library, the public library in the town. It was a 70-year-old library, I believe, and they category, they put it in for area redevelopment. And the judge of the court, unanimous decision ruled for Malanga's favor. I feel that in watching the video and reading the hard copy transcript from the planner, there is no testimony from the planner of actual harm for any category in Criteria D. As a matter of fact, the planner, you're the planner, in her letter, in her plan, in her plan that she submitted, redevelopment of this area is necessary to correct the concerns of safety, welfare, and detriment posed to the safety, health of the community. It's not actual detriment, harm. So. It's an invalid, invalid case from last, invalid vote from last week because it doesn't meet the requirements. Just bear with me. Due to new information that was presented tonight, I'll actually back up. Two of the, two of the members aren't here tonight, Mrs. Camudi and there's another gentleman at the end, I can't remember. They actually asked the planner, one gentleman asked the planner about harms, about a trailer. And the planner said she didn't understand the question. And then he rephrased the question and he said, was it, he moved it to something else. But I believe that the planner was, it's hard to believe that the planner did not know about this case law, especially the Supreme Court case law, that was only two years old. It's going to be two years old next month. And it wasn't brought up. Due to the information that was presented tonight, I request a board member to make a motion to reconsider the previous vote on Resolution 2024-147 of January 23, 2025, and have a no vote on tonight's memorialization of redevelopment 383 Bloomfield Avenue resolution as to circumvent any legal action. Thank you.
Sir, sir, do you want me just to address that real quick? The memorialization of the resolution is not an action of the board. It simply is, excuse me, the passing of the resolution is a memorialization of the action. So the vote has already been taken. The action cannot be nullified by this board at this point. The second thing is I didn't hear you consider subsection L of the RSIS, not the RSIS, excuse me, of the Redevelopment Act where the board also voted that the criteria is subsection L.
That's H, you mean.
I'm sorry, H, excuse me, H is in the resolution, so I didn't hear you address that.
And the planner had stated, and she's correct, that H cannot be a standalone criteria.
Absolutely.
Okay, it has to go with D. And if you don't have A through G.
Right.
H doesn't qualify.
Okay, and the other thing is that the Malanga case was the West Orange Public Library.
Correct.
And the West Orange Public Library was an entirely different situation, you know, given the state of facts.
I know it was a different special because there was public, because it was sold and it didn't go to public bidding. But if you read, if you read the court documents of the case from the, it stated that has no, they had no ruling on that whatsoever. It had no, no ruling on the bidding process whatsoever.
I'm very familiar with the case. And then the last thing is, it's interesting that you pointed out the extensive dialogue that the board had with the planner and the seriousness in which the board considered whether to adopt this as an area in need of redevelopment. In fact, there were a no vote. And I think that says something to.
There was a one vote, one no vote.
There was a no vote, correct.
Yeah.
And I think that says something to the fact that how the board considered this, considered it seriously and appropriately, and wound up with their vote.
Okay, I happen to disagree. I watched the video and Mr. Camudi basically said, I don't think there is harms. He's getting into talking about harms. And the chairperson said, hey, did you walk the site? Did you walk the site? He doesn't have to walk the site. He can look at photographs and if there's no actual harm to, to the public or the community, you know, that's, that's what he was getting to. And then he asked you about, Greg, should I walk the site? And I forget what, I can, I forget what you said, but you said, don't forget, this is smart growth. It builds the smart growth.
Well, smart growth is, is H, right.
Yeah, but if you don't have D, you can't have H.
No, I understand, and that was considered by the board. But my only point to make was that the board, the board took appropriate action. And what I don't mean the vote was appropriate, I mean took appropriate action by how seriously the board considered it. This was not just something that, that people just capitulated because they felt that they were supposed to. It was something that the board took into serious consideration and voted that way. That's, I mean, we'll agree to disagree, but I just wanted to point those things out.
Okay, now, why cannot a board member tonight make a motion to revoke the previous vote?
Because the vote, the vote has already been taken and the memorialization, the resolution is simply, is not the action itself. The memorialization, the resolution is the memorialization of the action already taken.
Okay, so there's no vote tonight on memorialization?
No, we're going to vote to memorialize the resolution. Okay, and memorializing the resolution is not a revocation. If the resolution doesn't pass, it is not a revocation of the vote.
Okay.
Okay, it would eventually have to be passed or I expect, I would expect it would be, it would not be, it would not be. Well, I don't know. I don't know what would happen if they, if there was not a resolution passed, but it certainly would not revoke or negate the vote.
Now, if the planner.
Right. But that's, that's, yes, though, right. Yeah, but that's, right, that has not played part. Right, okay, yeah. I'm sorry.
I thought you were talking, I'm sorry.
No, no, I understand, we were just.
Okay, good. The reason why I bring it up is because the mayor had mentioned last week that this is great for the community, great for the town. I guess if you're, I mean, we're all taxpayers in town. I guess, I guess if you're a taxpayer, it's not so great for the town. Because, again, tax-exempt properties, we're taking away properties that make, that produce tax to the town and giving taxes and properties, pilot programs.
There's been no pilot in association with this property. And we don't know that there will be a pilot associated with this property.
I realize that.
Totally separate issue.
I realize that.
Just saying.
Okay. And when you do give pilots or when you do.
The planning board doesn't do that.
When you scrap current zoning laws and you give pilots, it viscerates the protection of competitive bidding to favored developers that work with the town. Okay?
Well, that's, that's, you know, talk, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be snide or anything. Talk to your congressman about that because that's the law of the state of New Jersey, that, that the town can appoint a rede developer under no bid contracts. Every town in the state can do that. So, you know, that's just what the law is.
So the Malanga decision has no predicate over this, over this matter today?
The Malanga decision was set on its facts. And again, that was, that was Mr. Malanga, I haven't read the case in a while, but Mr. Malanga argued that the library was still in full use and there was no reason to designate the library, the municipal library in West Orange as an area in need of redevelopment by itself. So I don't remember exactly, you know, what the fact, what, what the court based their determination on. The language that you said, I do recall, that there has to be some kind of actual harm. But I believe it was actual harm in that because the library was still in use and had been in use for 100 or 100, 100 years or whatever, that it didn't meet that criteria. But I think that was case specific. I don't think that would.
Well, the township said there was asbestos, there was this, there was, you know, the saw was torn off.
Right.
But it was repaired. The asbestos, it didn't cause any harm to any, any residents using the library. And 383 Bloomfield Avenue is a business that's in use.
I understand your argument. I certainly understand your argument. You know, I appreciate your argument. You've done your homework, which, you know, I appreciate. But the board, as I said, you know, the board's action was, was taken with due consideration of all of the facts. It was not rubber stamped.
May I just ask a question while this gentleman is still up here? Has there been any change in NJAC 40D 12 blah, 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 to re, to basically alter or better explain or to change or edit the law to specify what this gentleman has, you know, basically qualified?
Not as the.
It hasn't been edited or changed?
There was a change, maybe 10 or 15 years ago. You're talking about the residential.
Well, I'm, I'm talking about this redevelopment law that he's saying that a Supreme, the New Jersey Supreme Court basically changed how it may be applied. And my question is, was there ever any change in the law to make qualifying as an area in need of redevelopment a little bit more stringent?
Not that I'm aware of.
Anybody?
No, that, what he's saying is correct. That's standard.
Okay.
And what was said in Malanga is just a recitation of other case law going back. So none of that's new.
Right.
It's just how it's always been interpreted.
Okay.
So he's, he's right. That's what the standard is. The question is, what were the facts in that case? Were the facts in this case?
Okay.
And, you know, there was a discussion. There were five Tim trying to put that together.
Right.
And there were questions trying to put that together. So, you know, we applied the standard. The question is, is there enough evidence in the record?
That's what I'm trying to say. There was, I'm sorry.
We passed the resolution. Right now, it's just the memorialization stage. And per the redevelopment law, all we're doing is making a recommendation. The town council has to decide whether or not to actually declare this an area in need of redevelopment. So we're done here as a planning board, but the process.
Okay, because in the Malanga case, the township was sued and the planning board was sued, both entities were sued.
Because we set the record here. This is where the hearing takes place. We make the recommendation. The town council looks at the report, looks at our recommendation, makes their determination. So it's kind of like a two-step process, but two entities are involved.
Because when she, when she gave her report last week, there was nothing in the, in the report that said there was actual harm to the community and, and whatnot. So she has to meet that criteria. She has to meet that criteria because that, that, she didn't meet that criteria.
It's not that she didn't, it's not that she didn't meet it, and it's not that.
Well, she didn't meet it and relate it to you. Well, you're using her expertise to form, to form a decision, correct? She's the expert in the, in the field and you're using her expertise to form an opinion to vote on.
Correct, obviously, her, her, her report and her recommendation certainly have an impact on people on the board without question. That's why she's an expert. That's why we'll qualify other people here tonight as experts to, to appear on behalf of an advocate. So, I mean, you know, that, that's, that's why they're qualified as experts and that's why she's the township's planner. So you have to, you know, a person making a decision can give as much weight as that person wants to the expert opinion. And, you know, you heard Mr. Camudi said no. And the other board members.
I also heard of one, Mr. Cassep, I believe, he seemed like he was going to go no. And he asked, he asked her, he goes, I don't see the harm. To the planner, he said, I don't see, I don't, I agree with Tim. I don't see the harm.
Right.
I see, what about this trailer that's on the property? And he asked her the question and she said, I don't understand the question. And then he came, oh, well, what about self-inflicted harms?
Correct.
And you told him that that would be a board of adjustment matter, that would not be.
I don't remember the context, but it would be a D variance, perhaps, but.
No, no, no. You said it was an applica, a different type of application of that.
I'm sorry, right. I can't remember everything.
No, 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 okay. But, and then we need to let this go if it's okay. But the other thing you said about the harm, and that's, that's what Jason was, was suggesting, is that the Malanga case was focused on the harm. Okay, and you keep saying, you know, this says there has to be harm, there has to be harm. But there are other, there are other criteria that can be met. So if you're alleging harm, then there has to be actual harm. We were presented with, with other facts that met other criteria of that subsection.
Can you tell me what they were?
I don't recall off the top of my head, but I know, I mean, if you look at the resolution, I think they're in the resolution.
Well, I'm, I'm reading what, what the court, court decided, the Supreme Court. And they said, now, this is for subsection D, 5D, says that the buildings or improvements located within the proposed redevelopment area suffer from at least one of the following conditions: dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light, sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, deleterious land use or obsolete layout. And that two, that there is actual harm, not presumed harm to the safety, they have to go hand in hand. That you cannot separate the two.
Well, the absolute layout, I believe there was testimony or of our expert that it was, it was a dangerous condition because of the ingress and egress, if I recall hearing something about that.
That wasn't, that wasn't on there.
Well, anyway, you know, I think we understand your, I understand your point. There's nothing the board can do this evening about revoking the approval. The approval was voted on, the memorial, the, now, they can vote not to approve the resolution. And, you know, quite honestly, I'd have to look into that about what would happen if, if the resolution did not pass, but.
Furthermore, what we came to last month when this hearing occurred, even if the board had voted not to recommend that this was an area in need of redevelopment to the council, the council could have overrode us and made that determination without our recommendation.
Okay.
So what Jason said is absolutely correct. This is no longer in our hands. It's now going to be in council hands or it, go ahead, please, mayor.
It's already been in the hands of the councils. The council on February 3rd during our regular meeting did approve and resolve that this 383 Bloomfield Avenue was a, an area in need of redevelopment. So the council's already acted on this. So regardless of what the planning board does at this point, the council's acted. I, I do hear what you're saying. Obviously, there's some research to be done. We rely on our attorney as, as our expert in land use. But at the same point, what I heard you talking about was concerns about the good for the town and the tax implications and things like that. That has yet to be determined. So my recommendation is that you now follow the council procedure on this as the plans are still in their infancy for this project. The council hasn't even seen any kind of drawings or anything at this point as far as what this building may look like, what the, the plans are. All that's happened at this point is that the piece of property itself, the parcel, has been declared an area in need of redevelopment. So my recommendation would be if your concerns are about the structure, about what's happening, and about the potential tax implications, no discussion on a pilot has even happened at this point as far as, I know Mr. O'Sullivan's in the same room that I am, right? But I always look just to make sure. But the other piece that's really important to note is whether or not this is declared an area in need of redevelopment. It can be redeveloped.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, the, and one of the benefits of having an area in need of redevelopment that I brought up in the last meeting is it gives the township council the ability to actually have more of a, of a say in what that property looks like and actually maximize the benefit to the community. So I want to put out that premise as why this is advantageous. And I think, in my honest opinion, and we've known each other for a while, that the area in need of redevelopment is the best, in the best interest of the town because it allows us more of that negotiating ability, allows us to help build a, a better vision for that property. But I do encourage you, Mr. Permer, to come to our meetings, come to the council meetings. We have multiple public comment times there as well and share your thoughts because I can tell you the one thing about the Verona Township Council is we listen to every word that comes across. And for those who watch our meetings regularly, you will note that we often make policy changes based on what we hear. So I really encourage you to show up as you have tonight. And, but I think at this point, the, the proper venue for your comments is the township council and as we move forward. So putting it out there, I don't think your concerns at this point are over or not going to be acted upon or whatever, but do come out to the council meetings and share your opinions with the entire group because I'm only one council member out of five.
I appreciate that. And my other concern was that approving this sets a precedent, quite possibly, that, you know, the redevelopment area goes from Montclair to Caldwell, right? On Bloomfield Avenue, pretty much. Isn't it designed, I mean, not, not in that way?
The Bloomfield Avenue corridor has been declared an area in need of rehabilitation, which is a very different procedure. And it's not, an area, an area in need of redevelopment has to be dealt with on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
Okay, because that's my own concern, that have apartment row right down, right down Bloomfield Avenue.
That is, that is not consistent with the master plan.
Because if you looked at towns that did that, Little Brooklands, where you don't see sunlight and you got four or five stories.
and you got four or five stories, and, you know, the buildings are right up against the curb line.
I wholeheartedly agree with you on that.
I do, too.
Okay, well, again, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm sorry for going over on my time, and I want to thank everybody for volunteering. I know you guys put in a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have it? Anybody else that wants to come up and ask a question or make a comment? Okay. I am closing public comment at this moment. We are, oops. Meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2025.
I'll move them.
Um, well, a couple of the edits were made, yes? That you don't know.
Well, from what I understand, they were. However, I'm just looking at page 5, and it lists under the vocal vote, Dr. Kesseth. And I believe he is not Dr., he is Mr.
So, I will make that edit.
You can leave that, he'll appreciate it.
Well, I can make, I will make the edit back on that.
Okay. Just so long as the vote-
With the edit.
The people that abstained were abstentions from the meeting minutes, not from Ms. Kester's appointment.
Yes.
So, okay, and then I think Doc changed his death. Okay? Any other changes? Okay. The mayor moves. Can I get a second?
Second.
Vice Chair Fresky, seconds. All members that were present.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstained? Two abstentions. Ms. Parker and Mr. Lilly. Okay, the minutes pass. Moving along, resolution 2025-03, recommendation of redevelopment, area of redevelopment for 383 Bloomfield Avenue. Can I get a motion to memorialize that vote?
So moved.
Mayor makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Fresky, seconds. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Hyman.
Aye.
Mr. Deal.
Yes.
Manager Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Feschen.
Yes.
Chair Pearson. Yes. Motion passes, resolution passes. Second resolution is extension for our planning board attorney through December 31st, because of the change of vote. That, so his term extends with our term's extension. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
By Mr. Hyman, second by the mayor. Roll call vote, please. Mrs. Parker.
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Aye.
Mr. Deal.
Yes.
Manager.
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro.
Yes.
Vice Chair Feschen.
Yes.
Chair Pearson.
Yes. And finally, that resolution passes, Craig. Congratulations. And you're stuck with us for an extra six months. And finally, planning board date set for the rest of the year. Once we do this, we'll send a memo to Jen Kiernan so that she can get them, group them together with all of her publications. So, does anybody object to any, those are the typical meeting dates, the fourth Thursday of every month, except for November, and then the first Thursday of December. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Hyman makes the motion. I'll second. Do we need a roll call vote for this? All members that approve the meeting dates through the end of the year, aye?
Aye.
Any anyone not approve? Any abstentions? Motion passes. And the resolution passes. Can we get a quick Mr. Hyman, would you like to give us an update on the master plan subcommittee meeting that we had earlier this month, please?
Sure, so we met with professionals and township employees February 5th to discuss the vacant land adjustment and go over some of the proposals that we've received. We are getting revised data and mapping. I saw the email that came through from Dan last week, but I didn't actually get a chance to-
In response to mine?
Read it, yeah.
Did you ever read mine?
I did not. And then we have a follow-up meeting in the beginning of March, so we're plugging along, but as you know, we do have a deadline of the end of June, so we should be getting the draft going after we finish our meeting in March. And we have the vacant land adjustment, I guess, not finalized, but to a point where we have our target number that we're going to work off of. And then we should be getting a draft to everybody to review. Oh, sorry, we should be getting a draft for the board review. I'd have to guess, but I think we're going to shoot for May. So, that's probably when you'll start seeing some substantive draft documents.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. I know this topic came up in the council meeting. Is the properties at the end of Brookside and Prospect, I know that those were put as green acres. Was that part of the discussion?
Yep, those are part of the discussion. You know, we're working through all of that as part of the vacant land adjustment.
Okay.
You guys got to be on your mics a little bit better.
Sorry.
Get them over there, because nobody can hear. Do we have any timeline for when those particular properties are going to be properly registered or certified as green acres properties? Ross, get on them, Rossi.
We've provided updated documents to Green Acres several times over the past year. There have been some punchless items that Green Acres has requested from us, so we're a little bit at the mercy of Green Acres' schedule. However, the documents that we've submitted to Green Acres are consistent with our open space plan, so I think we have solid ground to rely upon the combination of what we've already submitted in addition to our open space plan that exists. So, we are working with Green Acres diligently to try to address that as quickly as possible.
I guess, I think what, I guess, maybe a looming concern is if those properties aren't quote-unquote "properly registered" before the midsummer date, when our affordable housing issue is sort of due, will that have an impact on the available vacant land in the town, or will it pretty much be put to bed that those properties are in process and they're not developable? Do we know how that determination might be made?
Those properties were acquired with the deed restrictions, naming them as open space properties, so they, the only impact that it would have is that they are not on the plan for development, and they are accounted as open space parcels.
But will the DCA see it that way? I think that's a good question.
It's not up to the DCA at this point.
Correct.
They gave us the number. That was a recommendation. It really depends on if Fair Share wants to push it.
Well, Fair Share see it that way?
And it-
We don't know.
I think that's this, I think we have enough evidence on our side, but it's part of our ongoing discussions over the next months to continue to solidify our housing plan through our efforts in the coming months.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you both. What do we got? New business case, 25, 2025-01, 60-Pompson Avenue Block 807, Lot 16, in the C2 zone. Would you please come on up?
Good evening, Madam Chair Lady. Council's name is Robert Cassio, and I'm the firm's Cassio, Pobaco. Would you like to proceed in open, or you have some preliminaries that you do?
We do, Mr. Cassio, thank you.
Madam Chair, the application has been deemed complete. Notice is proper. The applicant can proceed.
Mr. Cassio, I'm sorry, can you just put on your microphone? Your microphone.
I'm sorry, I thought it was so loud that-
Madam Chair Lady, members of the board, council's name, as I said, is Robert Cassio, and I'm Thomas Cassio, Pobaco, One Bowl and Drive in West Orange. I represent the applicant in this matter, SAR Realty LLC. My client is the owner of 60-Pompson Ave, and is seeking to convert commercial tenant space to medical tenant space. At this time, approximately 33% of the building remains vacant, and my client has a current medical tenant, POPS Therapy, who would like to add an additional 2,870 square feet of space. The application, however, is to allow my client to seek out other medical tenants for the remaining vacant space, which is approximately, if you take the total, including the section POPS Therapy wants to date, about 11,600 square feet.
Can you repeat that number? I'm sorry.
Sure. Excuse me. POPS Therapy is already there as a tenant. They would like to add 2,870 square feet to their space. The total space that my client is seeking to get approval for to rent to medical is 11,600. That includes the POPS Therapy.
11,600?
Square feet?
Eleven six.
Eleven six.
Thank you.
As the board knows, the parking requirement for commercial space is one space for 200 square feet of-
Medical parking?
No, commercial space. Non-medical.
Office space, depending-
Office space? Office space in a mixed-use building such as this with medical and office, changes based upon-
On the total size of the building.
No, on the particular use within the building.
Well, I thought there were two uses, medical and non-medical.
Yes, so it's a mixed-use building, and if your non-medical use is, if your non-medical use is general office space, then the general office space under 10,000 square feet is six people per per thousand, not four.
And the next is five people per thousand. Next 10,000 is five.
Yes, but you-
And then the next is four, but-
That's correct.
I'm trying to deal with a common number here, so I'm dealing with the one space for every 200 square feet of gross floor area. And medical is one space for every 180
That's correct.
square feet of gross floor area. Based on my calculation, that's about 1.1% more space if we change the entire building to medical. We'd require additional seven spaces. Also, in 2004, there was a zoning application involving this property where the approval was conditioned on a variance being required in order to allow further medical use within the 60-Pompson building. The witnesses you'll hear from tonight are Dr. Samir Patel of SAR Realty LLC, Joe Sterba, the architect, and Joe Steiger, the traffic expert and planner. Also available, if necessary, is Richard Cross of POPS Therapy, which is a physical therapy provider for children with disabilities. I'd like to call my first witness, Dr. Samir Patel.
Here.
Over here, Ben. Dr. Patel, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Can you state your full name and address for the record?
Samir Patel. The address is 266 King George Road, Warren, New Jersey, 07059.
Thank you.
Can you please put your microphone on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Doctor, are you a member of SAR?
I am a principal of SAR, yes.
And when was that property purchased by SAR?
The 60-Pompson was purchased almost two years ago on March 8th, 2023.
And at the time of the purchase, what was the percentage of the building that was occupied by tenants, medical or non-medical?
At the time of purchase, a little bit over 50%, 55% of the building was occupied.
And what have you done to try to rent that vacant space?
We have retained the services of a commercial real estate agent through Whitekiss Realtors to try to lease the remaining vacant space in the building.
And is there an existing tenant who would like to take additional space?
Yes. POPS Therapy, who is the current tenant, would like additional space to what they currently have.
And how much additional space approximately are you looking to take?
They are approximately, I believe, 2,000, I forget the exact number.
If I told you 2,870, does that sound about right?
That's right.
Now, do you have any other prospects for medical or non-medical tenants in the building?
Throughout the two years that we've owned the building, all of the inquiries for leasing have been medically related, whether they be dental, rehab, specialty offices, all have been medical. We have not received any non-medical inquiries for the space.
And the remaining 8,000-plus square feet that would remain vacant, should we get approval to allow POPS Therapy to go in there, you're looking to have the right to lease that to medical, should a medical tenant come along?
Yes, absolutely.
No further questions.
Does anybody from the board have any questions for Mr. Patel? I have a question. Mr. Patel, I understand you bought the building in 2023.
Yes.
Were you aware of the of the, I guess, the restriction of expanding the use of medical use in the building due to parking?
Not fully.
Okay. When you purchased the building, was the current configuration as it is today, according to your application?
The configuration, meaning-
Meaning the square footage breakdown of use.
Like the layout of the building?
No, 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 I don't, I'm not talking about the architectural layout. I'm talking about the configuration of use percentage-wise or square footage-wise that was presented in your application by your architect and your traffic engineer.
From two years ago? About the same.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's the same.
Nothing has changed.
Okay, because the the resolution from 2004 stated that the applicant or the prior owner from you was given a waiver for a percentage of parking, which we'll get into, I'm sure, when Mr. Steiger comes forward, for the, for a singular use from one medical business to expand to ten thousand two hundred square feet, and as we can plainly see on your application, they're already using thirteen thousand, I'm sorry, thirteen thousand and eighty-five square feet, which is sort of not consistent with the resolution that was passed in two thousand and four. It's kind of gone beyond the square footage allowance that was given back then. So that's one thing. And also, on your application, you asked to use sixty-five hundred additional square footed feet. Now it's basically doubled.
That was a mistake that I made, and the correct information is on the plans and was on the plans.
There's-
And your engineer did observe that correct information.
Okay, but the board might need a little explanation of that, because we, we read everything. So I'm just asking, the number is what your architect has on his plans or what the-
The number is what the architect has on the plans.
Because the, the traffic engineer has the entire second floor going medical, whereas the architect has nineteen hundred and ninety square feet staying general office use. Which is it?
We are seeking to have all of this be medical. At the present time, we only have one medical tenant. We're taking twenty-eight hundred and sixty square feet.
I, I'm asking if the there's conflicting information on their documents. So I'm asking you, as the owner, you want the entire second floor to be medical, all eleven thousand or so square feet?
We, we currently have one non-medical tenant that takes up approximately two thousand square feet. We would like the ability to lease the entire building, if so needed, to be medical.
Okay, the entire building. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Have you had any inquiries from non-medical potential tenants?
We have not.
Not, not in your years of trying to rent it, two years, you had no inquiries, is that correct?
Correct.
No further questions.
Thank you. Oh, wait, does anyone from the public have any, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Does anybody from the public have any questions for the building's owner? Please come to the mic, state your name and your town.
Paul Petrangeli, Nine Martin Road, Verona, New Jersey. I actually live right behind your building. So my question to you is, as an owner, what are you gonna do as you multiply the tenants now? What are you gonna do to take care of that building? Because right now, I have photos, if anyone would like to see them, of your trash, your dumpster with garbage can, or garbage bags piled up next to them. And they were there January twenty-seventh, and I have a photo of them there last night. Your lights on your building all blink. I have video of that. They, two of them have been fixed over about a year, but the one on the building blinks nonstop. Uh, I sit in my living room and I can, right out my window, I just watch it. If anything in my house had a seizure, it's because of your lights. So I want to know, what are you gonna do to maintain your building as you raise the tenants? Because you also have all your landscapers, everything gets blown into the creek, which is about three feet behind your fence at the most. So you have a creek there and you have no curbing or anything. So everything goes right there, and there's actually police reports of me getting in arguments probably before you owned the building. But, or, you know, because you're, what, two years? You said, yes.
Correct.
So, uh, the landscapers, I believe they are the same, but they keep, they blow the leaves over the fence or they pile them up behind the dumpster, which eventually goes into the creek, which blocks the creek, which creates flooding. So my question to you is, what are you gonna do to maintain?
So I completely understand your concerns with regards to maintaining the property and making sure it doesn't affect your house and your property. I would certainly welcome any feedback from you or the, the surrounding neighbors of what issues you have, so we can address it properly. And I certain, I didn't know about the blinking lights, but you brought that up to me today. We'll address that and we'll try to take care of it. I, I certainly am interested in maintaining the building for prospective tenants, because if that's the issue, they're not gonna come lease from us either. But we would like to be, you know, a good neighbor and provide you at least with some semblance of good maintenance and landscaping for the property. Absolutely.
Thank you. And I have notified about once a month the tenants in the building and the people that work late nights.
Yeah.
And they have said their landlord is eh, late on things. Thank you.
Madam Chair, ladies, I want to point out that the questions, although I didn't object and will object so at this time, have nothing to do with the application itself. But I want, we want to hear what the neighbors have to say to try to alleviate the problems.
Well, I, I, I may not agree with that, because the problem is the parking lot, the, there is a problem with the parking lot. You want basically a variance for parking, and he was talking about the condition of the parking lot as it is today, before the use is expanded, before that space might be rented.
I just want to point out that is not relevant to the application, that's all. We disagree.
I, I have some follow-up questions along that line. I'm sorry, ma'am, but before you ask your questions, I want to just continue on that topic. Uh, Dr. Patel, your existing medical tenant, does, does that tenant have their own medical, their own medical waste pickup?
They, they have their own medical waste pickup, and then the general waste is in the dumpster in the parking lot.
Right. And there are separate areas for the medical waste versus the dumpster waste?
The medical waste wouldn't be outside.
It's, that's what I'm getting at.
It would be picked up from within the premises of their office space.
Interior.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, do they contract on their own, or, um, is it the landlord's responsibility?
They would contract their own medical waste disposal.
Uh, what about the general trash collection?
That is from the building. That's from, from our app.
How often is garbage pickup?
I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you exactly. It's, we have a contract with a disposer. I think they're required to do that. I, I'm not gonna put myself in a hole and tell you something that's not true.
Be sure you can provide the answer.
Yeah, okay, yeah, if you could.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
All right. Go ahead.
I've heard you both discuss having one medical tenant, but it's true that you have more than one tenant. You're, you have one tenant who's interested in expanding their office, but you have more than one medical tenant in this facility.
There are, there are two medical tenants in the building currently and one non-medical tenant.
Okay. Um, and the other medical tenant is not the Physical Therapy Center, that's Schweiger Dermatology, right?
Correct.
Are you aware of how many medical providers Schweiger has?
In that office space, no.
So I think it's over a dozen. Have you been to the, the, that facility during the day when Schweiger is operating?
I've seen it on occasion, yes.
Okay. And have you noticed the state of the parking lot when Schweiger is, is open and operating?
The state as in?
How, how full it is, how?
I've observed it during the day when, yeah, I've seen it.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll reserve my comments for later.
Yeah, I mean, one other question, and then I'm so sorry. The, um, you bring up a dumpster. That dumpster's not shown on the plans. How many parking spots does that dumpster take up? Two?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but a reasonable, a reasonable assumption would be two spots.
Okay. Yes, but I'm asking the owner because he just testified about it. Thank you. I understand. We'll, we'll get back to it, sir. And finally, I took a, a spin through, snow removal seems to be an issue, because there's really no place to put it. What do you do when you need all those parking spots where you put all the snow? Because, I mean, obviously, it melted over the last two days, but it was piled up in basically the entire rear of your lot, which was all parking spots.
Yeah, so I, I think what we need to do with our snow removal is when we have an increased amount of cars in that space, contract our snow removal, not just to push the snow, but to actually remove the snow, so that parking spots are open.
Okay.
They may not have, they may not be able to do that all at once, but you have to remove the snow, so to make the full allotment of spots available to the tenants.
It just also does cause concern, because that snow melt with all the salt and the chemicals goes right into that stream.
Understood.
And that's-
Actual, physical removal.
It's actually against the law now. Like, salt storage and salt waste is just-
Understood.
Just not okay. It's, so, yeah. I'm just saying that, that the snow removal thing really has to change, especially because I'm sure you use salt to ensure that your clients don't fall.
Yes.
Okay.
Doctor, give me one second. I'm getting myself. If this application were to be approved, you would agree as a condition of approval that future snow removal would be, uh, would be private and would be carted off?
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, but that, all that being said, I had no plans on speaking, but now y'all gave me a whole bunch more to say. Deborah Curry, right here in Verona.
This is questions of the applicant.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay.
Deborah Curry. Grew up here in Verona, so I'm here. Okay. Two things. I'm there also. I'm further in the middle. I can see all the stuff, everything he discussed, I can see, except the pictures with the trash and the garbage that's obviously been there for a minute. So that means one of two things. It's probably taking two spaces, and the dumpster's not big enough. Obviously, if there's trash behind it, big bags. Number two, what's in them? Medical waste? Is that what we're dealing with? Right by the brook, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I've seen you guys, because I get on my landscapers, don't you throw anything in that brook. You take it away, you put it in a bag. They, I hear you're blowers. They're not only blowing leaves, they're blowing garbage back there.
Ms. Curry?
Yes.
Just ask a, ask the question.
I'm saying this because I need to know how he's gonna make sure it's gonna change. You can say it's gonna change, it's up to them to do the garbage, but is there any follow-up to make sure they're doing it properly? Is there gonna be any follow-up to make sure they're going to take care of this stuff? Because I can see it from my, from my depth.
Ms. Curry, that's a question really of the board and not of the witness. So the answer is yes, there are, there are procedures where people in Town Hall can go out and inspect, especially if it's a condition of approval of an application, then there is procedures where Ms. Mish can make sure that conditions in approvals are being met.
So up to you, not him. I mean, it's up to him, but you follow up to make sure.
Not to the board, but, but people employed by the tenant.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Tony Fabrizio in Verona. Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
I didn't know that you just bought this in twenty-three. Uh, it's finally nice to meet you. My mother over there, eighty-seven years old, she, she's been there fifty-four years. We all been there, we've been raised over there. Nice house, nice neighbors. Uh, your property has a tree on the corner of our garage in the back. It's the biggest tree I've ever seen. It's huge. I have pictures over here. Growing mold on the top, a lot of droppings. It's leaning. The roots are coming up out of the ground, going into the garage and breaking up the, the floor in the garage. We've been trying to get the owner to cut the tree down and possibly, you know, put some bushes, bushes over there, or whatever.
Mr. Fabrizio, do you have a question with regard to the application?
The application about the parking spots? I don't really have a problem. But I want to see what you, as a neighbor, are gonna do about the tree that is right behind my house. That's basically the question.
This is not the forum, the tree has, is it, does the tree have any impact on park? This is not the forum for, for, for that question.
The only thing I was thinking, because sixty Clermont Avenue where my mother lives, is where the driveway that comes out to Pompton Ave. from their property. I was curious to see if that was gonna be expanded to have additional areas over there. But I looked in the plans and I didn't see that, so I think it might be okay.
There's no plans to make any changes to it?
To the driveway going up?
Correct. None.
Again, in this public forum, I want to make sure you understand.
Mr. Fabrizio, there's not gonna be a driveway from Pompton Avenue Business coming onto a residential street, Clermont Avenue. That's not happening. There is absolutely no access between those two streets. There's homes lining the street.
But the property is a little bit, um-
It's, it's not the application before us. I appreciate your-
Not a professional guy like you guys are.
We're not professionals either.
Since I heard, we got the letter two weeks ago, and I said, you know what, we haven't met this guy yet.
We're all novices.
I didn't know anything about it, so I'm glad we came, I'm glad that we met. And if you ever want to come over, we'll sign.
I appreciate the invitation.
Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tony.
Hello, Rodina Hudson. I live in Verona. You said you've owned the property for two years. I've owned my property for two years. I'm on seventeen Martin. In regards to this request to expand the parking spaces, and we brought up the issue of the garbage bins. Now, currently, every, or not every morning, but frequently, there is a loud boom between four and five AM. It is very disruptive to the community. Now, if you're going to increase these parking spaces and increase the amount of business occupants, what will be done to mitigate that?
They're not, they're not increasing the number of spaces.
Okay.
Okay. There will be no, the proposal contains no changes to the parking lot at all.
Okay.
What the applicant is seeking is to allow a medical use in the building, to expand a medical use, which requires, under our ordinance, more parking spaces. They can't provide more parking spaces, so they're asking for relief from the ordinance. And we will hear testimony that the applicant believes will support their application. So has, the, the, the parking lot will remain exactly the same.
Okay, it's more so the occupancy of the building.
The occupancy, the, the, the type of occupancy, the request is for permission to allow more medical uses. Because medical use, they need that permission, because medical uses historically utilize more parking spaces. So to justify their variance, they have to show that there will be no impact on the parking.
Okay.
But it will not, there will be no change in layout.
Okay.
Okay?
Very, thank you.
Any other questions from the board to this witness? Any other questions from anybody in the public of this particular witness? Questions that have nothing to do with trees growing in your garage? Okay.
I'll, I'll take, I'll take the picture. You got it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Joe Sterba, please.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, we can't see that. Um, if you bring it right here, I might be able to read any of that.
This is a nice and weird plan.
Yeah. There's absolutely no way, but, I mean, are you the architect?
He is.
Okay. Yeah.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you state your name and your business address for reference?
Joseph Sterba, S.T.E.R.B.A., forty-four Redmond Place, Tewone, New Jersey.
Mr. Sterba, what is your occupation?
I'm an architect.
How long practicing in the field of architecture?
Fifty-two years.
Well, what school did you graduate in, what degree did you obtain?
I have a degree, a bachelor of architecture from Penn State.
And have you testified previously before zoning laws?
Yes, I have.
And planning laws?
Yes.
And you're a licensed architect of the state of New Jersey at this time?
Yes, I am.
Madam Chair, ladies, I should admit that Mr. Sterba is qualified as an expert in the field of architecture.
I think we've seen you around before.
Yes.
Yeah. Any, any, okay, thank you.
Mr. Sterba, would you describe the existing site?
Yes. As you see here, this is the same as the site plan drawing that you have in your packet. The only difference is that I've applied color.
Mr. Sterba, can you please take that microphone out of the- Thank you.
Okay. This is the same drawing that you have in front of you in your packet, the drawing SP dash one point one. And the only difference is that we've applied color to make a distinction of the building footprint versus the site. The site is located in the northwestern side of Pompton Avenue. Uh, it is approximately eighty-one thousand three hundred and some square feet in area. And from Pompton, it slopes down away towards the rear of the property. The building itself is a three-level building. The rear portion of the- The rear portion of the building is partially underground. And the front portion of the building facing Pompton Avenue presents two stories. The building is a brick-faced building throughout. And it's a fairly common-looking type of building in this area.
What's the approximate total square footage of the building, sir?
It's about thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet.
And to your, does your client plan to add anything to this building?
No, there are no plans for any additions or alterations to the building at all.
And can you just for the benefit of the board describe how, briefly, how the first floor is occupied?
The first floor is occupied by, um... First floor is occupied by a dermatology practice, which you can see shaded in orange on this plan. And the remainder of the first floor is currently unoccupied.
And can you give us a brief statement as to the second floor's occupation? You are non-medical.
The second floor has a large unoccupied area, which is shown in the yellow-orange color here. And it also has a non-medical use in accounting firm, which is shown here in green.
And where is the current tenant who's seeking to expand located, Pop Therapy?
They're located in what we are calling the basement, the lowest area towards the rear of the building.
Could you review that, please?
That is this portion of the building in the orange color. And it takes up all of the office space on that level. The remaining portions of that level are unexcavated, underground, or storage area, mechanical equipment.
Can you explain what twenty-eight hundred and sixty square feet the Pop Therapy is looking to add to occupy?
Yes, they're, they're looking to occupy a space on the first floor of the building, the ground floor. The area on drawing A dash one point one, which is indicated in blue, and would include, uh... common space as well.
Are you familiar with the way the waste is disposed at? There were some questions about the waste.
The, the medical waste is, uh...
No, I haven't been medical waste. That's the, I assume the medical waste is done privately by the tenants, is that correct?
Yes.
As in the building waste?
There is a dumpster located at the rear portion of the building, the west portion, in that corner of the building, which is furthest from Pompton Avenue. It does not occupy, occupy any parking spaces. It has got an area into, onto its own in that, in that location.
Is that dumpster area screened?
I beg your pardon?
Dumpster area, is there screening?
No, it's not.
Did you have an opportunity to review the consultants' report, or the reports provided to the board?
Yes, I did.
And there's a report from the Environmental Commission, I believe?
Yes.
And did you have an opportunity to take a look at that?
I did.
Can you comment on the three entries on the first page?
Yes, the first, the first entry, I must apologize, it's a Scribner's error. We do not have a two-hundred-foot landscape buffer. As you may well know, information is copied from one project to another to copy the format. That was for a different building, in fact, an industrial building in another town. So the real answer is that there is a fifteen-foot minimum requirement. We have a twenty-foot buffer on one side of the property.
I have no further questions, this witness.
Mr. Cassillon, can we just for the record, may not be necessary, but can we mark these since they're colorized?
Certainly, because I haven't yet.
Yeah.
You wanna make, what is it, A one, A two, or what do you want?
Yeah, yes, please. So we'll call SP one one A one.
Yep.
A dash one point O, A two. A dash one point one, A three. And eight point one, two, A four.
Thanks.
Okay.
As I indicated, I have no further questions, this witness.
Questions from anybody on the board, yes, sir?
For Pop's Therapy, with the expansion, are they looking to move the entire operation from the basement level to the new area? Or is it just sort of a... What's the word I'm looking, like, like a satellite section? How is that planned?
To the best of my knowledge, it's an expansion of their operation.
If, it, do you happen to know if it might, would it be contiguous? In the sense of, are, are you, are, are there any plans to make changes to the building in the sense of, um... adding sort of like a, a different type of stairwell to go easier from, you know, from one area to the next? That type of thing?
I would suppose that would depend on whether this application is approved.
There's a Pop's Therapy representative here. And if necessary, at the conclusion of Mr. Steiger's testimony, I can put him on the witness stand to answer a couple of questions.
Sorry. Legal advice. Told me to not talk tonight.
Never works.
Um, so the answer to his question was that they're going to be on separate floors? Are they in the same area of the building? Is that what you were trying to ask? Will they be connected by a stairwell or an elevator?
That would be dependent upon whether this application is approved. We haven't done anything to-
So the answer for right now is no?
No.
Okay. That kind of what you're getting?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I didn't hear the answer because legal was telling me not to ask questions.
I have two questions. First of all, I, I may just not have understood where you were saying this dumpster is. Is it in the section of your plot plan in the back corner by the brook that's shaded out, it's not having parking? Or on the other side, it's not shaded?
The dumpster is located in the rear corner of the property, not the striped area. But as you look at the plan, the upper-left corner of the site.
Okay. So the second, there's, there's no proposal to change the layout of the parking spaces at all, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Did you evaluate, were there, there's any way within this to add any spaces, for example, by the type of thing where they do, you know, small cars only and things like that? Was that evaluated, as were there anything like that's even an option?
I would defer that to Mr. Steiger's testimony. He's the expert in parking.
The traffic expert slash engineer is the next witness. He can answer your question, but obviously, if we were to add anything, it would increase the impervious area. So there'd be a different circumstance.
I wasn't asking about adding impervious area. I was asking about layout of the parking spaces within the existing area.
Ask Mr. Steiger, he will be my next question.
Well, uh...
I, I, I just wish you wouldn't put reins on the board members that are asking questions of the expert who they think could answer those.
I don't put reins on anybody, I just suggested there's an expert witness who could answer our questions.
Okay, I'm sorry, continue. Or any...
It's all right, we can wait for the next.
Okay.
If, if the architect didn't look at that, then we didn't look at it.
Okay, Jesse, you have any questions? Jay?
No.
Doc?
Well, my, my...
Put your mic on.
My question gets to when you've put in medical and you have a bigger turnover in the number of parking spaces. That's my, my biggest concern. Are there gonna be adequate parking spaces? Or I saw the numbers and they said one number here and then a larger number here when you do the medical. And how do you accomplish handling that?
Currently, there are ninety-eight striped parking spaces on the property. And I would defer again to Mr. Steiger in his analysis of the adequacy of that parking.
Is, is that, is, is ninety-eight when you add the med, the new medical? The new, uh, let's assume that we get some new tenants who are medical. Is, are, are the parking spaces enough for what, the traffic that's gonna come in to the facility?
Again, I believe that Mr. Steiger has analyzed that and can give you a definite answer.
We have the traffic guide coming up now.
Okay.
Steve? Okay.
Uh, can you just provide an explanation on how the existing parking lot, if there's reserved spaces for occupants or employees of these spaces? And how that might change based upon how the building itself is being amended or to be, or being proposed to be amended? If there's additional spaces being reserved for this new occupancy, occupancy space?
That would be up to Dr. Patel to determine with his tenants what that arrangement might be. The spaces that are designated now, I can't recall exactly how many, are few in number for personnel within the building. I do not know that there would be any additional spaces designated as reserved, so to speak.
Mr. Solde, obviously Joe Steiger is an engineer, traffic engineer. You, and I don't need to be interfering with your questions based on the concerns of the chair lady, but he'll be better able to answer your questions.
Understood. I, I, I was just curious if the architect had any recommendations based upon the amendments to the building? If there was a correlation between the amendments to the building and what reserved spaces that might translate to for additional employees in those spaces? But if that's reserved for the traffic engineer, while you're testifying on that, then I'm, I'm happy to listen and wait for that.
Also, if necessary, I can put the proposed tenant on. They have a unique, uh, medical operation. It's not one that sees patients on a regular basis. They take care of young children with disabilities.
Mayor?
I'll reserve my questions to the traffic.
Okay, I do have a, a question concerning your buffer comment. What is the buffer on the side of the building that abuts the backyards of Clermont Avenue?
For the most part, there is no buffer at that locat- for the most part, there is no buffer at that location until one gets closer to Pompton Avenue. In which case, it, it varies, it's, it's somewhat wider than twenty feet.
And you stated that in the rear, it's twenty feet? The buffer in the rear is twenty, did you say that, or?
Yes.
Did I miss here?
Yes, I believe it is twenty feet.
And of that twenty feet, do you know how far from the parking area, the brook is? How many feet from the parking curb line?
That, that does vary, but it, in my estimation, when I looked at the site, it varies from something I would imagine about six feet to more like ten or twelve feet as the brook meanders.
Is that based on?
Field observation.
I, I'm just saying, you're saying that it, that it has a curve in it or something?
Yeah, the brook meanders.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The brook meanders.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And again, going back to the Environmental Commission's letter, there was a recommendation to actually plant trees in that area to help with the runoff and to, to actually clean up the runoff that's coming off of that site. Because basically, whatever the percentage of that site that is paved is all motor vehicle pavement and oil and whatever leaks off of a car, as well as the road chemicals are just going right into that water. Because obviously, the property pitches towards the brook. So I don't know if any mitigation tactics were discussed with your client? Or when you talked about the buffer and maybe accentuating the buffer?
We're not proposing any changes at this time.
Okay. That answers my question, thank you. Um, can I open? Were there any other questions by the board at this moment? You can come back. Okay, I would like to open to the public to ask questions of Mr. Steiger. I'm sorry, Mr., sorry. My bad. Sterb, it's so close. My bad. Can you, um, you know, why don't you? Take that, take that microphone, please. Yeah, just take it.
Paul Petrangeli, Verona, New Jersey. Um, my question, one of my questions also has to deal with the buffer. Um, the buffer, you state, is twenty feet in the backyard. And the brook meanders, I just want the record to show that the brook is less than two feet right up against the fence.
Do you have a question, or you're not testi- you're not testifying?
What I wanna, what I wanna know is, um, basically, if the, the client expands into medical use for the second floor, uh, A, the hours, because there is no landscape buffer. So I wanna know about the lights, because your whole building is lit up. So my question is, uh, A, the hours, and if there's no landscape buffer, like, you know, I just don't wanna see a whole building, that's what I see, so... If you're on the second floor, that's my question.
Wanna know if the hours are gonna change, sir?
I don't know if it's after five o'clock, because since there's no landscape buffer that's required, uh, you're not, I wanna know the building, I'm gonna be able to see it all night, like I do now. Are the hours for Pop's gonna go later? What time do they run till? We're going from the second floor now, so it's just the basement.
On no side, is it?
It's a rip, repairing zone, you're supposed to have a buffer for a repairing zone.
So, so the gentleman was saying that there is a repairing, it is repairing because it is basically wetlands right there.
And he- It has nothing to, they're not changing the design. They're not proposing to change any, the configuration nor the, um...
They're asking for a waiver for parking, so...
They're asking for a variance for parking.
Mm-hmm.
But the other issues are existing. They're not asking to add parking spaces or to put in parking spaces that don't meet the minimum dimensions of our ordinance.
Did you add parking spaces? Because it said it started at seventy-eight and now all of a sudden it went to ninety-seven and tonight during this discussion-
We do not add any parking spaces.
Did you re-stripe to come up with more? Because it said seventy-eight and now it's ninety-seven. Not, I thought it said ninety-seven on your plans.
Ninety-eight spaces, I believe.
Ninety-seven on your plans?
I think there are ninety-eight spaces. Well, there is some, there's a note about restriping for ADA, but that's not changing the parking. There's a note on the plans about restriping for the ADA spaces, but that's not changing the- We didn't restrike. Oh, okay. If we get the approval, we're looking to restrike. Okay. But that's not gonna change the parking? Not changing. Okay. The, uh, tenant has disabled children and that's why we're looking to restrike. There are a couple of additional disabled.
There are a couple of additional disabled spaces.
So, I believe the plan, it says that it'll reduce it by one. Adding, adding the additional ADA space, it says will reduce the overall number of spaces by one. So down by one. What's the total? I think it's set down to ninety-seven from ninety-eight. If I'm recalling correctly.
I thought it was ninety-eight, I wouldn't insist, I'll let my traffic expert.
I think your traffic expert has that on table four, but I won't, I won't speak for him. Go ahead, I'm so sorry. There was something I just had. Right now, you have seventy-eight spots and you're not restriping until or unless, is that what the deal is right here?
I'm not testifying, the traffic expert will be next.
Well, I know, well then, can you tell me, are there seventy-eight spots currently and then you're looking to restripe for ninety-seven or ninety-eight?
There are currently ninety-eight spots that I counted this afternoon.
Okay, so what needs to be restripped, if anything?
The only restriping was where there are currently handicap spaces that are indicated with the blue stripes and the symbol for handicap parking. We are proposing reconfiguring them to provide more space between those parking spaces for better access to those spaces. That's all. Those four spaces will remain four spaces.
Okay, so that configuration that you show of the handicap spaces, you have two spots that are immediately adjacent to one another.
Right.
And there is no space.
There are outboard of those spaces.
That's current or that's proposed?
That's proposed.
That's proposed? No. These, right, so two spots that are proposed are adjacent to one another.
Yes.
So how does the driver of the car in the second spot get out of his car?
There are access aisles on either side outboard of those two spaces.
Yes, but only on the passenger side?
On one of those spaces, on the driver's side on another of those spaces.
So how does the driver get out of the second spot?
It's not, doesn't, certainly a wheelchair.
Okay.
Somebody with a handicap.
Yep. Somebody who walks with a limp or something like that.
That's correct, configuration is eighteen.
Any other. Any other questions of this witness? Any other questions from the public for this witness, questions about his testimony, please?
Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you, Mr. Steiger.
Mr. Steiger, would you raise your right hand, please? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give, the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name and address for the hearing?
Yes, my name is Joseph Steiger, S.T.A.I.G.A.R. Business address is two four five Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Mr. Steiger, what is your occupation?
I'm a professional engineer, licensed in the state of New Jersey, and also professional planner licensed in the state of New Jersey. I specialize in traffic engineering for the most part, but I do site engineering as well and professional planning, as I stated.
Could you briefly, what school did you graduate?
NJIT, New Jersey Institute of Technology, quite a few years ago. And I've also been an adjunct professor of traffic engineering at NJIT.
And have you testified before numerous planning boards and zoning boards?
Yes, and before this board as well.
And we accept that as an expert in the field of engineering and planning on each and every occasion?
Yes.
Madam Chairlady, I submit that Mr. Steiger is qualified as a planner and a traffic engineer and engineer.
Unfortunately, I did not, I am not Dan, and I did not go to NJIT, but you may continue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Steiger, would you just briefly describe the location of the park?
Well, we're on a state highway. And we have a four-lane roadway at our site. It's an existing building with parking spaces. There are ninety-eight spaces. I know the original plans, Mr. Service Plans, had ninety-seven. I counted them, he counted them. Your engineer in the latest report also finds ninety-eight spaces. So I'm, I'm pretty sure we got ninety-eight spaces on the site currently and as proposed. There's no change in the number of parking spaces that are, that are being provided. The only minor change, as Mr. Serva had pointed out, is the restriping to make the handicap spaces ADA compliant with federal law. And that's the only, the only change, really the only change on the exterior of the building at all.
And are there any changes, there's been discussion about drainage, any changes planned to the drainage?
No increase in impervious cover, no changes in grading on the site. No, so the answer to that is no, no changes to the drainage.
Any changes to the ingress and egress to the site?
No, not at all.
And can you just briefly discuss the proposal before the board?
Yes, so this building has broken down into medical and non-medical office. In addition to that, there are some common spaces, storage and stairways, bathrooms and so forth. The breakdown of the building currently is about sixty-seven percent occupied. So about two-thirds of the square feet are occupied currently. And of that sixty-seven percent, there's about two thousand square feet, actually nineteen ninety, one thousand nine hundred ninety, of non-medical occupancy. That's the accountant. And in addition to that, there's thirteen thousand eighty-five square feet of medical that is occupied on the building. In addition to that, there was non-medical vacant space, we'll call it, I call it non-medical, but it's vacant space. So it's about two-thirds, one-third occupied and vacant on the site.
Would you describe the, not, give a little more detail as to where the parking is? There's been a lot of talk about the parking. Where is the parking located around the building?
Around the four sides of the building. There's parking in the front, two sides, and in the rear. So it's well, it's well spread out throughout the site.
And did you do a traffic study in conjunction with this application?
Yes, well, we're here before the board for a variance for parking. And that variance is promulgated by the change of the use of the building, which is currently a non-medical and medical, and we're asking for all medical on this site. So I looked at it at a number of ways to determine the adequacy of parking. And I think the most accurate way of determining, which is spelled out in our, our report, was actually take counts in the parking lot, how many parked cars are in the parking lot? What we find is that sixty-seven maximum, sixty-seven were determined to be parked on the site. So that's the existing maximum parking demand of the current use of the site. And that's with, and the numbers, I think simplistically, you look at it, we have almost a hundred spaces, ninety-eight spaces, almost a hundred. Sixty-seven are occupied at any one time. So about two-thirds of the parking lot is filled. And two-thirds of the building is filled. So the simple, the simple math would be, okay, so if you prorated that and you increased the occupancy of the additional one-third that's currently vacant, should be a straight-line relationship, which would be conservative, straight-line relationship, that the parking would also increase. So whereas we're going at a hundred percent occupancy, we'll have a hundred percent, approximately a hundred percent of cars parked in each and every parking space. We have ninety-eight spaces, the projection is that, mathematically, the projection would be ninety-seven parked cars with a full occupancy of this, of this building. This building is primarily occupied by a medical use currently. There's a small portion, less than two thousand square feet, that is non-medical. But looking at it on the one-to-one basis, the difference between having it as it currently is to all medical brings you up to that ninety-seven number of parking spaces. Well, mathematically, the calculation is ninety-seven parked cars in ninety-eight spaces. So that, that was the one way that I analyzed it. The other way analyzing it, looking at your ordinance, I don't believe your ordinance is exactly realistic and reflects the real world. But the difference between medical and non-medical is point five five parking spaces. So with this theoretically, if you take your ordinance and, and if you required the amount of parking for your ordinance, the difference between non-medical and medical is just an increase of a little more than a half a parking space. Now, Mr. Gassion had pointed out that your ordinance says one space for every two hundred square feet for non-medical, one space for every hundred and eighty square feet. That difference is point five five parking spaces. So multiply that by the size of the building, the difference is seven parking spaces. That is really just a side note that, that I looked at in terms of how do we, how does the ordinance apply? Actually took empirical data, the parking counts in the parking lot. And then the last portion, which falls in line, the third, third aspect that I looked at, that falls in line with empirical data is the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, has parking studies for medical office, non-medical. I have a litany of land uses, but specifically medical and non-medical office. And for medical office, the peak, average peak parking rate is two point six three parking spaces per thousand. We're finding that we, where the existing use of the building generates three point one six spaces. So the ITE is actually lower parking rate than, than what we're, we're projecting, I'm sorry, what we found in the parking lot. Again, just pointing out that the validity of the number of spaces that, that we determined in that actual parking lot. So with that, I believe that the, that the utilization of this building as fully medical office would be, could be accommodated by the parking supply that's on the site currently. You'll hear, you can hear some testimony to the aspect of that, the POPs therapy. These are children that have physical therapy and they do not drive. They are dropped off by their parents, they are there for hours during the day for the physical therapy. The parent does not park the car and go sit in the waiting room for three, four, or five hours throughout the day. They drop the child off and then they leave. So in terms of amount of parking, if we know that the one tenant is going to expand, has a minimal amount of parking demand because of the very nature of, of the use of that medical use. Again, just pointing out that we took a look at, I believe that our projections are conservative, there is an economy of scale. You know, if you, you expand the amount of office space, you don't, not, your employee rate does not go up on a linear basis. The economy scale is going, you don't need, you don't need five admin when you only had three before. You can probably do it with four admin, even though you, you might double the amount of space. So there's, there's, there's that ability that this space can be accommodated. And the last thing, my experience with the medical office, and I'm sure everyone has, has seen the, the same characteristics, is when I was a kid, going to, going to see the doctor, it was a doctor with a stethoscope, a chair and a table, and that was it. Now you have diagnostic equipment, you have a multitude of medical, we've become so technically involved with the medicine, medical fields as it is today. There's a lot more room per person than there were back in the old days, I'll, I'll say. So the very nature of medical offices is that it is spread out and not as intensive in terms of employee and patient as it, as it was in the past. Much simpler to, for patients to make reservations and change reservations. I know, I don't even talk to the, the people in the office anymore. We're always dealing with texting and things like that, so it's very easy. So my point being is that I believe that the medical office has seen a reduction in the amount of parking that's required. For instance, I went for my, just Monday, I went for my semi-annual and all my information. I didn't have to have a follow-up meeting with my doctor in the office. My information was online in the, in an app. And then I had a Zoom call with her as well to go over the results. Not, no need for me to go into the office an additional time. Again, all points that, that less parking, we've seen a decreasing amount of parking in this types of, this type of land use.
Mr. Steiger, I believe the testimony was that the tenant, POPs therapy, is looking for an initial twenty-eight hundred and seventy square feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Of that twenty-eight seventy, how many additional spaces would be required? Would it be slightly less than two?
Well, oh, from, yes, you made the point, yes. So twenty-eight seventy square feet being converted from general office, non-medical office, requiring one, one space for every two hundred square feet to medical office, which is one space for every hundred and eighty, relates to one or two parking spaces.
Now, the entire amount.
Per the ordinance, I'm sorry, per the ordinance.
The entire amount of additional space that the applicant is looking for, something like eleven thousand square feet, as opposed to adding medical space, what would the number of additional spaces required be? Should the board determine to give that entire amount of space?
Again, per the ordinance would be seven, seven additional spaces.
Now, Mr. Steiger, you also have been qualified as an expert in the field of planning.
Yes.
Have you reviewed with the board the planning concepts involved here? And the issues with regard to medical space as opposed to non-medical space, et cetera?
Well, I'll talk about the, I think the, the smaller aspect is the buffer and, and the ability to add buffer to this site. The only way that we could be able to add buffer is reduce parking on this site, which would serve, make, make no service to, to the site. This site is completely developed in terms of the ability to put buffers. We can certainly enhance the buffers that are there. We talked about the fence, leaves and garbage being blown through the fence into, into the, into the stream. I believe it's a wire fence right now, allows for that perviousness of, of, of stuff going through the fence. We can make that a solid fence, we can put the vinyl slats in there, make it a vinyl, add better buffer to our neighbors in the back who are, that sees the activities that are going on. And things like that, there are, there are areas that we could maybe enhance some of the landscaping on the site as well. Again, working with what we already got on the site to make enhancements of what a buffer can provide, doing the best that we can. The other aspect that we, obviously, is parking. We are asking for a variance per your ordinance. I believe that the analysis that we show is that this medical office conversion can occur with sufficient parking on the site as the parking exists today, not expanding, not adding more spaces, that the, that the parking lot is underutilized. And by filling up the building with a hundred percent of medical office, will be accommodated, that parking will be accommodated by those ninety-eight spaces that are on the site now. So there's no detriment to the, or negative aspect. These are underutilized parking that can be utilized by, and support the variance. And without any detrimental impact to the, to your zone plan, to the neighborhood in the area. So based on the C2, where the benefits outweigh the detriments, I believe that this variance can be granted by this board.
Now, you work for a engineering firm, is that correct?
Yes, dynamic, dynamic engineering, dynamic.
How many employees in that firm?
It's over four hundred total.
And can you tell the board how frequently in the last three or four or five years, you've had applications for non-medical office buildings?
Yeah. I have not, I have done one office building in the last. Yeah. Um I have not, I have one, done one office building in the last, I'd say, twenty-five years uh in my career. Um I've worked on more office buildings that are being demolished and repurposed for residential, for warehouses. The vacancy rate of office buildings in in New Jersey, well over eighteen to twenty percent. Uh the only office building I I have done, and and actually was built in twenty-twenty, was the L G, uh North American headquarters. I mean, very unique um development um in the sense that L G Electronics wanted to move their headquarters into Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey, and uh and that was the only office building that I can honestly say, new one, that worked on an application in decades. So the 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 demand for office, I, in my field, I have not seen it all. In fact, there's a much diminishment in the amount of uh office space.
And would you review the proofs with regard to the zoning, with regard to the parking for the medical use?
Yes, the uh again, I think the proof, proofs being the um C-two variance whereby um the benefits outweigh the detriments. Here we have pavement that's underutilized, parking spaces that are underutilized. We have a building that's been vacant, partially vacant. The owner cannot find a tenant, has tried extensively to to fill it. Uh and the only thing that's stopping us from being able to use it for medical office is the parking variance that we seek from this board. So I believe that the benefits that would be gained by uh by sheer zoning, uh having a utilized building that's currently been vacant, only appears that it'll continue to be vacant unless that use changes from non-medical to medical office.
No further questions, Mr. Switz.
I have a question. Um not to beat a dead horse, but going back to the actual parking space count, I look in your report, it says ninety-seven spaces.
Yeah, I got that from the, from Mr. Sturba's plans without counting it.
But your count is ninety-eight, so those, the report and the plans will be conformed to-
I'm sorry, you have to answer-
The plans and the report will be conformed to reflect ninety-eight.
Yes, ninety-eight, correct.
And was there any consideration given about installing EV chargers to bring that seven-space delta down?
You you make a very good point that I that I neglected. I believe that we need to comply with the statute, uh that EV statute, uh and and provide fifteen percent of our of our um provided parking spaces would need to be EV EV charged. So we have a close to a hundred, probably need fifteen spaces. Now, we do get credit of ten percent of what's what's required. So if this board approves it, based on the ninety-eight spaces, we get ten percent credit or nine, a nine-space credit. Our variance is decreased by nine, in theory, decreased. So I mean, that that complies with the law, and that would be the number that we would be dealing with-
Right.
-in terms of what what the, what the actual variance is. Uh the differential is nine less spaces than uh than than as indicated by taking the EV credit.
Right.
That's my question.
Good evening. Um so I was looking at your report, and you said that you did your observations on Wednesday, between nine-thirty to eleven-thirty and one-thirty to three-thirty, right?
Correct.
On one, one single day, yes. Um and you you said it was to coincide with typical peak hours. Did you determine the typical peak hours? Did you have conversations with the tenants of the building?
Yeah, yes. Actually, the I T E has breakdown of throughout the day of when the-
I understand that, but did you have conversations with the tenants of the building, the existing tenants, to determine whether your sample was representative of the peak times for their offices?
No, I did not have any specific, I'm just going from my experience as the traffic engineer, when the peaks occur. Peaks are not going to occur during lunchtime. They're not going to occur early in the morning when people are still trickling in or leaving towards the end of the day. The peaks do occur in that mid-morning, in that mid-afternoon um for for the office, any type of office use.
I I appreciate that. So the answer to the question is no, you didn't talk-
I didn't speak with the tenants.
Often, I don't know, and this is why I'm asking, I don't know if the existing, there's a large dermatology practice, allergy immunology practice with multiple providers. Some doctors' offices have limited hours on Wednesdays. That's kind of a, a cultural norm. Um it's golf day or whatever it is. I don't know if that's the case for Schweiger, the the tenant, um but I am concerned about one day at one time being used without any consultation uh with the uh with them, determined that did reflect their peak census uh for individuals in that facility. Uh my second question, let's assume that the variance would be granted um and we're all wrong, that there isn't enough parking, because there's obviously a potential for that. Um did you observe as a traffic engineer where the next best alternative for parking would be for individuals who could not make it into the lot?
Well, you would have to park, park legally, um you'd be parking on the street someplace, public parking.
And the next closest street is Claremont Avenue?
I, yes, I believe so, yes.
And do you-
Can't park on Pompton, so.
Yes, you cannot park on Pompton, I mean, unless you want to, you know, die a very quick death. Um but so you did not specifically observe or do any census on Claremont Avenue? Um I, so you can't tell me what side of the street they park on. My concern is, if you look at Claremont Avenue, the, if somebody could not find a parking space, naturally they would turn right out of sixty Pompton Avenue. The next appropriate place to park would be Claremont Avenue. Parking is, and they would be going, driving down the north side of Claremont Avenue, but the parking is ordnanced only for the south side of Claremont Avenue, which would necessitate uh K-turns or driving through neighborhoods in order to facilitate that. Um so that is a, is a significant concern. In addition, if individuals were to turn off of Claremont and uh park on Martin Road, the parking is also ordinance for the west side of Martin Road and not the east side, which would be how you would access by a right turn. So it does concern me that um there's a reliance that this number at this time is representative of that sample, and there wasn't much consideration to uh the effects on the neighborhoods where there is relatively frequent street parking.
Can I answer, answer that?
Sure, sure, go ahead.
Or at least comment, I don't know if there's a question, but uh you make a very good point, and um I think there are a number of factors that could influence it either way. Certainly if I was a medical practitioner, one thing I would look for, do I have enough parking in the parking lot? Or are my patients going to have to park around the corner someplace? And if they do, I most likely will not go there and rent that space. So there's mitigating factors that I believe you can point at. Oh my heavens, what happens if I'm wrong and the number is seventy-one instead of sixty-seven? Where are four people going to park? Um but the mitigating factor is that maybe not, won't happen because a smart tenant is going to look at what the parking situation is and decide whether, I got a lot more patience than that, and I don't have enough parking for, I may not need or want to go here. So I think there's mitigating factors either either way that, you know, compensate for the possibility. What if there were a couple more parking spaces on another day at some point, or what happens? So, yeah.
When you, when your team did the parking counts and observed, um I think I missed this question for the architect, but looking at the plans, um it doesn't look like there is a um a sidewalk around the building completely. So when your team was there, did they observe people walking through the the parking lot um in order to access the building? It doesn't appear that there is a sidewalk completely around the building, and does not appear, despite most of the parking being on the west side of the building or the rear of the building, that there is building access, as the architect pointed out before, uh the, that is unused space at the at the back of the building. So was there any observation or any comment from your team as far as people walking in the in the driveway or anything like that, that raised any concerns to your traffic engineers?
Well, there there is sidewalk. I'm not going to say that it's uh three-hundred-and-sixty degrees around the building, but uh about a hundred-and-eighty degrees, um the whole uh, you know, what, the front of the building, this one side of the building, and this concrete sidewalk on the opposite side. Um if we were, someone were to park in the back, um they would have to walk through the parking lot to to uh get into the building, which is a very common way of of any parking lot, or just about that, to get. If if you pointed to any parking lot, I would have to say there's, there's the need to park, walk in the parking lot, it's proper, rather than jump on a sidewalk and be able to take a sidewalk into a building. That's a very, very rare occasion.
No, I I appreciate it. It's the, over there, the um, you know, the space is narrowed as a one-way, there's a lot of, you know, room to manage cars and people. Um my last question is, you brought up the um the the increased reliance on Zoom meetings, which was a very interesting point. Um the, the largest tenant is a dermatology allergy group. Um do you think that's a, this may be out of your expertise, but do you think that those are disciplines that are conducive to Zoom uh doctor's findings?
Well, my, my wife just went today to a dermatologist. She had a sample taken of a mole, and that's taken to a lab someplace. And what she's going to do is get on a Zoom call to discuss what the results are. She doesn't have to go back into the office and sit face-to-face with the dermatologist to find out. So I I think any type of medical use has that ability. Um once you go in, some, some testing or diagnostic, uh you have to wait for the results. You can do that consultation via Zoom rather than face-to-face.
That concludes my questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Greg.
Mr. Snyder, I just wanted to clarify something. On the EV spaces you had talked about, the credit, it doesn't, in my understanding, and I've been wrong before, it doesn't apply to commercial space, right? It's only new residential development?
No, it applies, it applies, and I don't know this, the nuances and the specifics. I think that there is changes to the use, I believe, or the site plan. Um uh it-
But this is not, this isn't a site plan application.
Right.
So there, you wouldn't get a credit for having EV spaces. Because our ordinance has to be this, it has to be, we have to follow the state model ordinance, basically. We don't even need an ordinance.
I'd have to get back on that, because I I I don't know. Um I don't know if it if voluntarily, if you add fifteen percent, which is the requirement, then you can get credit for it. I, so I'd have to look into the statute.
Okay, and I believe it's only residential, but I mean, I just briefly reread the ordinance, you know, the model ordinance, so.
Can we take like a three-minute break?
Make it a little longer. I would like to talk to my client for a couple minutes.
Okay, a few-minute break, please.
Thank you.
I will leave tonight for the first.
I will leave tonight for the first. Beds got moved today, and Kate took the big furniture. Left a lot of small stuff, put the big furniture. We entered from our ranch. And see what I have. I guess the base is. I don't think this has a smart system. What am I? House I'm going from, I had a smart system years ago. They call this house a smart system? I don't know. More interested in getting the ranch than I was worried about also.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Shall we play?
Oh, yeah.
Play anymore?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
So it wasn't.
Thank you for allowing the recess. As I recall, it's time to cross.
Yeah, we're in the process of doing that right now, right?
Yeah, that's what I was just saying, that's what I was saying.
Yep.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay.
So, Mr. Steiger, I disagree with some of your projections around and assumptions around occupancy. Even though you say that some of the parents will be dropping their kids off for therapy. I mean, just the nature of the way physical therapists work, there's multiple patients at one time. I'm sure not all the parents are going to be dropping them off, some are going to be staying. And I don't, I don't think your linear progression is, I wouldn't believe that, just based on my experience with many physical therapists. It's fairly intensive, and there's typically multiple patients per time slot, per therapist. So it's a sharper curve than a typical, I think, medical practice. And then your also, your assumption around, around sort of video or Zoom follow-ups. Yeah, I'm not convinced that that should be given a lot of weight either. I know that that happens sometimes, but I just don't think you should make that assumption, because as we were saying earlier, is that if we don't get this right, and we have people driving around the streets, or can't find a spot, then that's what we're trying to avoid.
We have, we have the therapist manager here, so we'll have better answers for you.
Yeah, the problem with depending on one particular type of medical use is that that could change. Right? I mean, we're not talking about the owner of the building being a physical therapist and et cetera, et cetera. We're talking about, I mean, I don't, we're just talking about a tenant, but the use is what we're talking about, not the type of physical therapy versus, you know, dermatology versus ophthalmology, you know? It's the medical use itself, right?
You could restrict.
Right, I mean.
Just saying, you could choose to allow a dentist only, or something.
And that's why I took an additional step and looked at the ITE parking generation as well, because that addresses that very question that you, what is the general nature? Not this specific tenant, not this specific, what is the general nature of medical and dental? As I pointed out, what I found in counting cars, we have 3.16 parked cars per thousand square feet. The ITE, which is a more conglomeration of the general population of medical and dental offices, is 2.63. So we're operating higher than what the average is, let's say, on a national or statewide, regional basis. So that's why I believe we're up in that upper range. And if we did have different tenants coming in, it more likely would come down as opposed to going up. So it's again, it's probability, it's what the most likely will happen. But again, I believe what we found was, we found what the most likely aspect is going to happen.
So according to the use, you're supposed to have 141 spots.
Per your ordinance, per your ordinance, and your ordinance is.
Let me finish, please. I do have questions. That's okay. I'm like, buh buh buh. I do it all the time, so go ahead, interrupt me, I don't care.
No, I won't.
We're okay. Yes, per our ordinance, and there's a reason for that, because some uses, medical uses, are more intensive than others. You seem to be claiming that the use for this gentleman as a physical therapist is not as intensive as other medical uses. But we don't really know that 100%, and we also don't know what other types of medical uses that the client or the applicant may have coming in. That being said, it's, our ordinance calls for 141 parking spots. You have 97 or 98, depending on how you want to split the baby in the backwater on that one, which is about 31% deficient on the site. And as the mayor pointed out, it's a very big concern, because there is really no overflow parking on that two, four lane. Maybe it's 25 miles an hour, but I can tell you, people do not go 25 miles an hour on Pompton Avenue. They're more, it's a great deal faster. So your visit on that one day at those two time slots in a building that has a great deal of vacancy at this point, and then you counted the cars that were there, of course, the cars that weren't there because there is a vacancy, and then you extrapolated up to a number that just seemed incredibly random and incredibly one-day, one-day event kind of thing. I see anger or something boiling. Okay, so the problem with extrapolating off of such a random, one-day, two-time slots is what the mayor said. You didn't really find out whether those were, like, it's a different medical use. ITE didn't look into which medical use has, you know, more, you know, the more used hours, the most busy hours. I know that I go to the doctor at 7:00 a.m., and they open, Schweiger opens at 7:00 a.m., and they close at 7:00 p.m. for the most part. A lot of people go into the doctor's office before work or at the, sort of at the end of their day, so they don't miss a full day of work. I think rush hour can be a very busy time for those places. So I am very skeptical of your numbers, your extrapolation, and your report.
Okay, and I can say again that the ITE is a conglomeration of empirical data that professionals have put together, done the same thing what I did on this one specific, actually go to sites to find out what is the parking requirements, and they've even broken it down into hourly basis. And you're right, they may open at 7:00.
They do.
But, but they're not at their peak. All of the staff is not there at 7:00, the patients aren't all there. What the ITE, based on empirical data, actual counted data, is that it happens at 10:00 a.m. and at 2:00 p.m. It's mid-morning, mid-afternoon, and it makes sense, because you have people trickling in. They're not all there at 7:00 on the dot, and parking lot is full. And same thing at 5:00 or 6:00. And lunchtime, obviously, is not the peak time for people to, for patients to be there and/or the staff to be there as well. And again, that's borne out by the ITE as well. So I firmly believe that we hit the numbers in terms of when we took the counts. Is one enough? Is two enough? Is 10 enough? I can't tell you, but I think it's a valid question, and it's something that we can follow up on.
Well, it's 30-plus percent short of parking for that type of use.
Charlie, can I interrupt you for a minute? You keep talking about the 30%.
Yeah, because you were given a 10% overage in 2004.
Can I finish? It's a pre-existing use, it's there. The variance is for seven spaces, not 30 or 40 spaces. Seven spaces. The difference between non-medical and medical. You're talking 30 spaces, that's not correct. We have the right to be there.
You know, sir, I want to correct that a little bit. In the 2004, in the 2004 document that we have, it seemed to say that there were 78 parking spots, and that you were granted a waiver of 10% of the parking in that lot.
Well, not 78, there are 98, so I don't know what that means. I have no idea what it means.
Does that, did anyone else see that? 78? And then it was changed up to.
In the resolution, the 2004 resolution was included in the application.
But the.
It doesn't, it doesn't have the parking. But it just said that the 10,200 square feet that are subject to this application shall be utilized only for a single medical practice. So they got a variance to allow this medical practice.
And my traffic expert just looked through the resolution, goes, same about 78 spaces. So again, I'm trying to point out that the variance is for seven spaces.
Why do I have 78?
Because it's on the plan. Right here. Existing, this would be existing. If you had second floor business, then existing two, this is what's being used now.
Yeah. It's based on the vacancy, not the approval. That 78.
Existing, I think. Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry. This is, I don't understand the difference here. So what is the 78 for? These are on.
I have no idea what any.
I'm sorry?
I have no idea what any, the judge provided 97. 97 spaces.
I, listen, I would like to know what the 78 refers to.
That was 2004, how can I tell you what the 78?
I think that's based on the exist, it might be based on the existing use.
If it was based on existing from 2004, then your waiver was granted basis, based on that amount of parking, right? 10% waiver.
No, but the approval is based on what the site plan was, and the site plan was 98 spaces.
We don't know that.
No, but that's what's there now.
We don't know what that was in 2004.
It hasn't changed, they've always had 98 spaces, so that's what the approval was.
Then why does it say 78?
This is existing.
This is 78, that's just what it is right now in terms of their vacancy and occupation. But the building approval in 2004 is what the building was built at.
Here's why, because it has previous use and proposed use. So with the proposed use, they would need 65 here. With the current use, they only need 55.
That's, that's only one floor. Yes.
Second floor, ground floor.
Those are, that's each floor.
I'm not, I didn't draft it, I'm just telling you what it means, okay? That if they have the second floor for medical, medical, chiropractic, or veterinary, they would need 55. Right now, the only people on the second floor are the accountants, and they need two. That's what the existing is. So based on the existing use of the building right now, they need 78.
The accountants need more than two. If they have 1990 square feet, it's four, it's, I'm just saying.
Yes.
They have more than two employees.
I can assure you, the existing number of parking spaces is not 78.
They need around eight for that use. I could do math. But bottom line, I don't see it as you only needing seven spots. That's not, from my perspective, that is not how I see it.
But you might see it now, imagine with the factor, seven spaces.
You just pointed to the ordinance and said you need 141 spaces for the ordinance, but then if you go back to the ordinance, the difference between non-medical and medical is seven spaces. So you can't, if you're going to use the ordinance, you can't use it one way and not the other way. Use it both ways.
I have, I have a slightly different question, related, but slightly different. Going back to the, whatever it was, 2004 resolution, it very clearly says that there will only be a single medical practice of 10,200 square feet. So whatever variance was granted for however many spaces, and there was a variance granted, was limited to that. You've made it very clear that you're seeking to get approval for potentially the entire building to be leased for medical use. So that's obviously more than 10,200 square feet, and presumably requires 141 spaces that don't exist. So my question is this, it's kind of what I asked the architect, you said, I ask you. Did you do any evaluation of the existing parking to see whether it could be adjusted in any way to provide any additional spaces? I'm not talking about more paving, because I'm familiar with the site, that's not the issue. Whether restriping, reconfiguring would add anything or be detrimental? Did you evaluate that? If so, what did you find out, and if you didn't evaluate it, why not?
The answer is no, I didn't evaluate it, but it was a, is a good question. And based on what my recommendation would be, in order to get spaces, you have to have smaller spaces. And if we took the staff particularly, since the staff primarily comes in during the morning and leaves at night, maybe go out to lunch in midday, it's low turnover. And if we designated the rear parking for staff parking, which is the least convenient, and not to the general public, we could break that down into eight-foot spaces as opposed to nine-foot spaces, and still be functional for the employees who park every day in there. Or compact spaces, I think that was your point. Can you fit more spaces within the same area? We could do that by making smaller spaces in some cases, either eight-and-a-half foot wide or eight-foot wide spaces. So it's something we can look at.
Yes, please.
For Mr. Gassio, and I think this question is more directed for you and your client, but I'm going to ask it now. If this board were to grant you a variance for the.
Pops therapy.
For pops therapy and pops therapy only at this point for the expansion, which seems to be the, you know, it doesn't have as much effect on the parking. to be the, you know, um, it doesn't have as much effect on the parking, and you could potentially come back to the board, you know, on the other item, would your client be willing to, you know, would that be amenable to your client as a, as a step at this point?
Yes, it would. Because the only tenant we have is pop therapy. We've been looking for tenants. So we're not going to go chase a dream if we can get the 2870 for pop therapy.
Thank you, Mr. Gassio. My recommendation to the board at this point would be, we obviously have to hear from the public, they have the right to question this witness. After that, I would be happy to make a motion with some conditions to approve that variance for that facility for the physical therapy, um, with a couple of conditions related to buffers, things like that, to assist the residents. If that's amenable to everybody, um, I think there is a legitimate reason and need for that facility that would not have a huge impact on parking. That would be my recommendation on how to proceed at this point, but we do obviously need to allow the public to ask questions of Mr. Sager before then.
Chris, yes. I have one quick question. How many square feet increase is that total in the building for the physical therapy group?
When 2870 is even.
So we go up to 15,000 square feet, basically, of medical use in that building?
I'll, I'll.
Something in that, in those whereabouts?
We're increasing 2870, whatever it is.
Okay, I'll tell you, because I, I did, I did math for a living.
It's too spacey. It is too spacey.
Two, two additional parking spaces.
The need would be.
Yeah, that we would be.
I actually was just looking at the square footage use. That, that's really what I wanted to get to, hold on.
Counselor, while the chairwoman is doing that, can you tell me what the legal ramifications would be for the rest of my applicant? Yes, can we withdraw the rest without prejudice?
I think, I think you'd be amending your application at this point to apply for only, um, an additional 2,870 square feet, two spaces, and then you withdraw the.
I withdraw the other.
Without prejudice. Right. Right.
Reply.
Right.
That would be fine.
Wait a minute. All right, so it would be pretty much 16,000 square feet, 15,955. It would be that, I mean, according to the numbers on this gentleman's, would you agree?
Yes, I think you're right. Right now, based on the plan, the amount of medical that's occupied is 13,085.
Yep, plus.
And if we add the.
27, 2870, was it?
2870.
15,900. Is there a way, does anybody have an issue with locking that in as the limit of the building?
That would be for discussion.
I, well, I'm asking.
I will let the public ask their questions.
Okay.
And we could have a motion and a discussion off the motion.
But it, it, it just.
On a legal basis.
On a legal basis, there's always an opportunity to come in for a variance based on, you know, other testimony. So that's why the resolution from 2004 says what it says, no further medical use unless there's a variance.
Well, let me ask you this. Wouldn't it be putting in an application, well, for something that was basically, anyway?
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? When you have an application for the same thing.
It's not restricted.
Okay.
That's what Mr. Gassio was saying about preserving the rights.
Okay.
To come in, because it could be a medical use, it could be, you know, one doctor in 5,000 square feet.
That, that would be a doctor.
It could be a voodoo doctor.
I, I just, a question for Mayor Tamboro on that proposed modification. Uh, when you say you wanted to limit it to the additional, uh, you know, 2,800 or so square feet for pops, did you mean just for medical use in general? Because the prior resolution was for medical use, single tenant.
So.
Are, do you now want to, is it a?
Correct. I would, I would, uh, put the variance for the physical therapist. Right now, based on the 2004 resolution, the pops actually shouldn't even be in that building.
That's right.
Based on my reading, um, it's been, it's been an allowed use. So I think if our concern being parking at the facility, our variance would have to allow pops, number one, because it wasn't allowed originally. However, after 21 years, you know, obviously, the, the, the client and pops, you know, there's, you know, some legal abilities for them to claim that we did not address this from the zoning, the planning point of 21 years.
Physical therapy is not the same as medical under the ordinance?
So that's, that was my question, actually, to the, to our attorney over here.
Did you look?
But I would, my, my motion would be, and I do want to hear from the public for this, but my motion would be to allow for the X number of square feet, we add the two square footage together, the ground floor and upstairs, to be allowed for a physical therapy office in that time. Put the same restriction in that if there are any other, um, desires to use that, then it would be, have to come back before the board for a different purpose. Um, and to include buffering for that space in exchange for the applicant withdrawing the rest of their current application without prejudice. Um, that's what my motion would be to allow that.
Does our, first of all, does our traffic expert want to?
At this moment, based on the mayor's suggestion, it, and all the discussion that's happened, I think we've covered it all. There, there have been other things, should, you know, other potential uses that we don't know about. Um, there were more concerns with that, but if that is no longer the case, then there's no questions from me.
Can I be heard just on one thing? The total pops therapy space then would be 6370.
63 what?
6370.
6370.
They're, they have 35. Now, we're asking for 2870. So the total will be 6370. Obviously, we have, I don't know what the dermatology group is, dermatology group's been there forever.
Do you want to calculate?
What did you say the total would be for?
60, 6370.
6370 is what I think I said. Yes, 6,370 square.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I see on, in the basement, it says 3204 are currently used as medical use. Am I right? I'll check.
Turn to the microphone.
Well, I'm looking, he has the same numbers as, as Mr., yes. Can you pull up page three and six of your own report, please?
Of the traffic report?
Yes. So right now, you have existing and proposed at 3204. Medical use in the basement, that is, I would assume pops, yeah? Okay, and then you're asking for 2870?
2870 is what we're asking for.
2870.
That's correct.
That comes out to 6074.
Yeah, you're 300 over in your math.
I, I only know the 2870, the number that I just gave to the mayor came from my traffic expert.
Well, you added 300 extra, whatever.
3270. Okay. The number I gave to the mayor was wrong, I just was told the existing is 3270, and you have to add on to that.
180277.
The existing is what?
I just was told 3270.
70. And then based on the plan, you would want to add 1802.77.
We want to add 2870, so.
20, okay. It's just on the, I need to pull up the plan again, I'm like.
I'm sorry, I'm being told, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So everyone's charts are mislabeled, is that correct, with the square footage?
I didn't do the chart.
I'm not, I'm asking your, your witness.
I, I got the chart from the architect's plan, the architect's plan in the basement shows the physical therapy tenant space is 3203.70 square feet.
Right. And you're saying that instead it's 3270? I know, it sounds like a little, but.
I did have got a correction, 3203.
3203.
Point 77, so 3204.
Yeah, decimal point, what's that at zero?
3204, that's what he has right here.
Okay. So 3204, and then the upstairs, on the plan, it says there's 1,802.77 square feet of unoccupied space, which is substantially less than the 2870. I'm just looking to figure out where those other 900 square feet come from.
Yep.
What is the space there?
There's only 1803 vacant on the first floor.
That's, that's what I just asked.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, make, make sure you're looking at the basement floor.
Basement floor is 3204.
That's the 3204.
Physical therapist.
Okay.
What are you increasing into? The first floor?
Oh, whoa, whoa, whoa.
The first floor only has, as the mayor just said.
It's 180277.
1803 available.
I don't know. The architect. I think that was a question that was asked, where, where, where they gone, where, where is the additional space gone?
No.
Yes.
Because you're adding the basement to the first floor.
Basement to the first floor, thank you, yes.
So let's, let's check that out.
That's.
Because he also asked for 6,500 on the application, and it's 11,000. So. Can I, is he a medic? I mean. Can I be some help?
Oh, Jesus. You definitely shouldn't. I've had this much. You don't know why we're just coming in a car, I'll make it nice.
I'm glad you're interested. 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 I'm glad you're interested.
Mr. Mayor, I, I have to apologize, these are different numbers I'm getting. I think this is now the accurate number. Yeah, I'm getting it from my professional, so I'm not doing the accurate.
This is like election now.
That's what I have as well. I'm going to call it 5,007, and you can have those extra 0.5 square feet if you want.
I'm very sorry for the improper calculation.
So can we just sum it up like this before I open to public? You're asking to convert 1,803 square feet on the first floor that is currently vacant to medic, to the medical use of, uh.
That's correct.
For, for the physical therapy use. Okay. I would.
Call the ground, I'm just following you. The ground, the ground floor.
Okay.
Really is the second floor.
Okay, I'll, I'll call it the ground floor, the 1,803 square feet of vacant space right now to be converted to use for the physical therapy that's currently, and that's it. Okay.
Does that affect the amount of parking spots?
It, it does. It does.
It would, it, it increases the requirement by two spots. By two, it remains two.
Um, does anybody else on the board have any further questions for this gentleman at, at this time? I would like to then open to public. You have, you have your own microphone over here.
Okay. Paul Trangelley, Nine Martin Road, Verona. Okay, um, a few things I want to say are, I agree, uh.
Wait, these are questions.
Questions for Mr. Sager.
This isn't your, and you're out.
All right, my questions are the traffic study. Did you take, is it just parking study or traffic? Because did you take into consideration the new light going on Clermont, or right next door, less than 15 feet from your property line is a Med Center building, which is also medical, which has people come in and out every day? And then, like we talked about before, if it's not pops, is it going to be later on down the line? It could be other medicals, so that's my other question.
The answer to that is.
You did take that into consideration. And was there any, was, did you understand that even right now, traffic backs up and blocks that driveway?
Yes.
Without the traffic light?
Yes. I, I, I know that, I was there, there would be times of traffic conditions on, on, on.
So if there's a traffic light at the top of Clermont, would that back up even further?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't, because it should, it should make it more efficient for process vehicles. And again, I didn't study that.
Okay.
Traffic signal design, so.
Okay.
I'm sure, woman.
Yeah, wait, oh, we have another member of the public?
No, sorry.
No, please.
No, 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 I'm good. I'm going to make a motion, so. Go ahead. Hi, Regina Hudson, um, Verona. In regards to the blanket statement that you made, that typically now, um, most medical visits are telehealth?
I'd say most.
Okay.
I said that it's something that has come, uh, in, in the last few years, that has, I believe, a beneficial thing in terms of the amount of traffic that's generated and parking is generated.
Okay, my apologies. I thought there was some sort of inference that, on a, okay, I could be wrong. I, I just want to know, was any consideration taken when you make that statement into, we're in a post-pandemic era and in healthcare, statistically, what it's looking like for telehealth versus inpatient visits? And then also, as it relates to different healthcare specialties and, um, payer contract for medical policies, it's more stringent for a telehealth versus an in-person. So did you take into account the current tenants, what their percentage and statistics are of telehealth charges out, which can be obtained versus in-person visits?
No, this was not specific to any, any tenant, and I, I think as the chairwoman had pointed out, we need to take a look at a more global aspect of what the general aspects are. And I did not know what a zoo call was five years ago. I know what they are today, and as relates to medical, it, it is part of the medical industry, a good part of it, that follow up with, uh, with, uh, televis.
Yes, my question is, can you quantify that? Because you just said it's general, and I'm saying, as someone who's, yeah, as someone who's in medical, um, in a post-pandemic era, there are papers that are coming out that are showing the difference in the relationship between continuous telehealth visits, the payer relationship that impacts that provider's decision to either bill out for telehealth or not. I'm just, I'm asking in regards to that statement, if there was taken any consideration. Answer is no. Thank you.
The answer to that is no, I did not take that into consideration.
Are there any other members of the public that have questions for this, uh, witness? If not, mayor?
I'll waive the meeting.
I am going to, I am going to close public participation on this, for questions, but it will be reopened for comments in a, in a few moments.
Before we do, um, do you plan on calling the tenant?
I don't, I don't. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, well, before you do, because I had a question, I was reserved for the tenant, but, uh, Mr. Sager, if you could answer it generally, um, with respect to the medical use, is, do you know whether this tenant or medical practitioners in general, do they have the ability to control patient intake by way? patient intake by way of appointments versus are they subject to walk-ins?
Oh, yes, absolutely. By appointment only. This is specific.
This specific is by appointment only?
Yes. And most medical, it is by appointment only unless there's an emergency of some sort.
Do you know if this tenant handles emergencies as a?
In this situation, he's a very severely disabled child. And they're here for hours at a time.
Right.
They have appointments and they're there for extended period of time. They do not see that many patients through them. This particular situation.
So unlike in a, like a retail or traditional commercial setting where you have your hours of operation and you could get slammed with a rush that you don't expect, here it's controlled.
It's controlled because it's a by appointment only.
And if the tenant determines that, hey, the parking is insufficient, they can modify how they schedule?
That's correct. Yes.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Mayor, before you do, are you going to propose something?
Yes.
I would like to open to public first.
I'm just on anything or do you open public?
For public to make statements about.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
I don't do that during discussion.
At this time, sorry, at this time, I open to public comment. General comments regarding this application.
About the application.
The application.
Okay. Not just a question for him. All right. So basically on the application, I don't have an issue if this was deemed just to POPS. POPS, like they said, helps the disabled, the seriously disabled, seriously disabled. They don't have crazy flow of traffic. I do hear the kids outside. I do see them every so often. They do drop the kids off. My concern is for later on down the line when POPS leaves. The dermatology place to me is the biggest traffic and the biggest problem with it. I just, I have no issue with what's going on in that building. I have an issue with what's going on. And after talking to the owner and everything, he's going to hear a lot from me in time to come. But I believe as long as he keeps a good relationship, the residents will keep a good relationship and that's all we ask for. The only issue I have is basically pulling out onto Pompton. The parking, yes, I believe you can change some lines and move some things around. I work civil engineering, I'm a land surveyor. I've worked with dynamic alongside many projects. And I know you can totally revamp this parking lot to make it fit more cars, plus have a dumpster corral. And instead of changing the fence to a vinyl fence, you have a chain link fence, which is basically brand new because your plows pushed it over a few years ago. And I would just suggest a curb along the back line with a depressed curb towards where your dumpster is to get the water out of your property. And that would stop all your stuff from going down and like the trash going through the fence. Otherwise, I'm okay with just POPS. Nothing else after that.
Can I ask you a question? You want the water from their site to run off onto the back?
No, but they're not going to change that. There's no site plans. I, if it was up to me, I would want drainage. I would want the water to be stored and then cleaned and then dumped back into the brook, down the brook. You would need to go, there was so much. You would have to pull the curb three foot off of the fence line now because you don't have an existing buffer. You have 16 feet.
I objected.
Let's, can we stay on?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Sir, he's making a comment and I just asked him what his.
Not relevant to this case?
He's, he's allowed to make a comment.
It's not relevant to this case.
So I get four minutes as a public speaker.
This is not public speaking.
Okay. All right.
You made your point.
I made my statement. I was just talking.
I asked about the curb depression.
But then you kind of went off. You were trying to answer the question because of your knowledge, but.
Yes, I would not want the water
There you go.
to be drained into the creek because it is legally not allowed to have be drained into the creek, but.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Any other members of the public have a comment? General comment about this application? Seeing not, no more. I am closing public participation.
Madam Chairwoman.
Yes.
I move that the board grant a variance to allow for 5,007 square feet of physical therapy space, that the space be restricted for a physical therapy practice. And as conditional for this approval would be some attractive buffering be installed by the building owner. Visual buffering between, you know, Long Barton Road and Clermont Avenue, those borders.
You mean a fence or?
Yeah, something.
Are you talking a fence or plantings? Bufferings or plantings?
Correct. So something attractive visual buffering. So they don't have to sit parking lot. Can we do that?
Is there, we can. Is there? Is there practical room to do that?
There is some room. One feet.
I mean, there was testimony that they could do additional landscaping or put up privacy fence, so.
I mean, a privacy fence would be fine too.
My, our, my traffic chief engineer says we could put a fence. There's not much room for a reason.
So. A solid fence I would include as part of the motion to install that, to provide that buffering.
Along both, along.
Along Barton and Clermont.
The back driveway and the southerly.
Correct. The south and the west.
Right.
Ends of the parking lot.
And would there be a stipulation added to that stating that that limits medical?
Correct. My, my motion is. My motion is. My motion is for 5,007 square feet to be for physical therapy restricted to physical therapy.
I understand what you're saying, but I'd like to add to it. I think it needs to be clarified for the entire space.
So I'm not, I do not agree with that.
Okay.
For my motion, the reason being is that I am differentiating between general medical space and the physical therapy space.
So on that motion though, you know, I did a quick look at the code. Physical therapy space is not a defined term. It's called in under medical use.
I agree.
So I, I have an issue with.
It's medical.
It's, it's medical.
I agree.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
What we saw?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
He said it's medical use. He thinks that.
Yeah. Under the code, we don't have a definition for physical.
Yeah, but you can, you can.
I, I know. But I, you know, my preference, my two cents is.
Oh, okay. You're making a broader.
I think it should stay medical.
So you don't want to restrict it just to physical therapy?
Right, right.
You just want to, you want to grant a variance for an extra 5,007?
No, it's not an extra. It's eight.
Yeah.
1,800 square feet.
But I, I would also like to add additional conditions that we had discussed. There were some open questions about trash collection, whether it was sufficient. While we didn't have any testimony specifying what the collection schedule was, I would like a conditional approval that the applicant provide that information to our engineer for determination whether the trash collection is sufficient and if necessary, increase the frequency as well as limit the hours of pickup to after 7:00 AM. I would also like a, the dumpster to be screened with that privacy fencing. Uh, the dumpster to be screened. So there's actually a trash enclosure. And the reason being that, you know, if, if the parking spaces are going to become more utilized, if we are at capacity, I don't want a situation where the dumpster is moving into parking spaces, trash is spilling out into parking spaces. So I want to enclose dumpster. Also, the condition on snow removal, I think our attorney noted that, but I just want that on the, on the record.
Snow.
And also a condition that they would add the EV charging stations.
What, how, I mean, because it's not deemed for commercial use?
So they, they, I, I would say the seven parking spaces, that is the delta between the existing office use. And if it was a fully medical building, seven EV. Well, yeah, seven EV charging stations as a condition of approval.
So being, you know, I had made a motion at this point, you're asking.
We're adding.
Yeah. So, well, that has to, I have to consent to that. On the motion, so.
We can make a new motion.
So here the, well, we have to either defeat this.
Rather, rather than dueling motions, I just wanted to put that out there.
So.
I, I don't really like the process here. I'd really rather talk about it.
You have to have a motion to discuss. Otherwise you're discussing non-specific items.
Right.
So I'm happy to amend the motion to include the, the trash components and the snow removal as discussed. I, I do wish for the motion to remain that that area is restricted to physical therapy because from the testimony that we have heard, that has the limited impact on the parking. And that's why I'm inclined to do that. We also have to make sure that we're not actually, we're adding 5,000, 5,007 square feet of medical because based on the 2004 resolution, the other 3,200 is not technically an allowable use now because it was not taken before the planning board between those times. So we're actually adding 5,007. So if we want to, I perhaps, if we want to say that it's medical, but the use of that medical space is restricted to physical therapy, I think that would be Mr. Heineman's legal goals and then my goal of making sure that the parking piece is dealt with. I understand your point about what's in the code, so that is a great point. I would include that. The part about the EV chargers, I I think it's the expense of the, of the EV charger. I don't know, based on how many people like use this space or it's all residential here. So I'm not sure requiring the EV chargers is necessary for the application as it stands now for the parking piece. My concern also is, is that if people are not going to charge their vehicle and pay for it, that, that actually pulls back on the amount of available parking and could potentially make the problem worse. So I would pull that if the building owner wants to install EV as a, as a service to the tenants, because many might start requiring that in the future. That would be up to them. But my concern is putting more restricted parking on site because if people are going to use that, either the building owner is providing for electricity, which is an added expense or they're now charging because you can't by state statute, right, park in an EV spot unless you're actively charging your vehicle. So that's my.
I think you can on private because they can, they can make their own parking requirements for EV, like you could, anyone could park there.
I mean, I think at this point I would, because the concern is parking, that we limit parking with that. I also think having the EV chargers there invites a security concern for the building where people that, that live in the area might try to use those spaces, especially if they're not going to be metered. And now the police are patrolling, you have cars there. It invites towing issues and all this stuff the police department deals with. It's, they're almost like an attractive nuisance over there where they are. And then you have people walking to various different points. So I'm just not convinced about that. So I would amend the motion to add the, I'll just restate the motion. 5,007 square feet of medical restricted to physical therapy. A privacy fence on the south and west sides of the building facing the residences only on Clermont and Martin Road. The trash pickup after 7 o'clock. A notification to the township engineer of when that trash and how often that trash pickup is. A privacy fence around the dumpster as well to screen that. And snow removal with truck out from the sun. I think those are the appropriate conditions based on discussion. I do have some items for comment, but I'm not going to comment now because all I'm doing is making a motion at this point. I'm going to reserve my comments for the discussion period. That's, that's my motion as a stand.
Comments?
We need a second on the motion in order to discuss.
I second.
Mr. Vice Chair Hruski seconds. Discussion. On, on any other further issues on this, amendments, suggestions, tweaks?
I just have one item for discussion. Well, I was reserving my discussion. I, and I want to provide my rationale for the public. This is, this is the opportunity to do that. I am compelled by the, the use of this building for therapy and the limited impact it does have on parking. I find that compelling. The reason I made this motion is I did not find the rest of the parking study or testimony compelling or credible. So I'm, that's why I'm focusing on this piece. In addition, I've asked the township manager to direct our zoning construction officials to take a more active role in monitoring that site in order to meet the, the needs of the neighbors. And I, and now that the building owner is more aware of some of the issues involved, I think that I have confidence that you'll be a good neighbor and address those issues based on the understanding and your openness to that. But I do want to point out that this does not limit the ability of the municipality to make sure that that facility is meeting our obligations in accordance with rest of our code. And that, that's my, the conclusion of my comment. Thank you for listening.
I have a question regarding the scantness of information that was included in the resolution passed in 2004, which is no great surprise because we weren't around. I would really like there to be a suggested or a figure of allowable usage for that medical and or other. That would be 14,888 square feet, or if you round up 15,000 total for that use. At this time, there's 13,085 allowed, not allowed, but use right now for medical use. And you're adding 1,803. That brings you up to around 15,000 square feet. I would like to.
As a summary, just to say?
No, in the, in the resolution.
No, but as a summary in the resolution? Because the resolution allows something that the code doesn't allow. Otherwise the code stands. So it would, so.
I'm, I'm saying that the details should be drafted because we are, we really didn't know what was happening, how much expansion occurred in 2004. We only know that the expansion occurred from X to what? Up to 10,200 square feet. We didn't know how many parking spots were. I'm just asking for details to be drafted into this, limiting the medical use to 15,000 square feet in the building unless the applicant comes back for a variance the same way. I don't understand what you don't get. Does anyone else understand what I'm saying?
Don't, don't, like.
I'm just.
Don't turn it into an argument.
I'm not turning it into an argument. I don't understand why.
I'm not sure.
It's curious.
So if I could just procedurally.
Sure.
The motion is to add 5,007.
Right.
allowable square feet. We already have the 2004 resolution that allows for the X number of square feet.
As effective as that was.
Right? Well, that's, that's there. Now we're adding 5,000. I don't think we need to have necessarily a total number because we have those two things added together. If we wanted to memorialize that, because I.
Actually, that resolution had a limit of 10,200.
Right. But now so we're adding 5,000 to that.
I think that goes to Jessica's point is that it, it isn't clear because you're operating under the assumption that this 2004 resolution approved 10,200 square feet of medical total. But that's not really what it says. It says subject, that's the subject of this application. We don't know what the medical use was in the big building that this 10,200 square feet was being added on to.
Maybe it was 5,000.
I, I mean, I think what.
So that, that's why I, I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of parsing it out.
My.
Clarity in terms of, well, this is physical, 5,000.
No, no, no. Okay.
This is like, we should just allow the use for medical as defined in the code, either for the whole building, for us, what's on the plans.
Exactly.
Or deny it.
Right. No, no.
I don't like the idea of parsing it out and make it more complex.
It's getting far more complicated than it needs to be. You're asking me not for. You're asking me not for what's approved, you're asking me on how to write the background in the resolution.
No, I, I'm.
The resolution is not.
I'm, I'm suggesting that there's a limitation of 15,000 square feet in the building.
That's, that's exactly what we're asking.
I'd like that written clearly and stated clearly in the resolution as, listen, he's giving you his conditions. The minute I ask for something, you're like, no.
Yes, look, I object, you can't put a total of that, which you don't have the history. You don't know, you're allowing the, what the mayor has proposed. That's what should be in the.
Well, it's, it's on the plans of what's medical and what's not. And we're adding 5,000 square feet to what is on the plans.
That's right.
Right.
So in, in the factual recitation, could you just take the numbers from the plan and just say, hey, existing condition, there's this much medical? And then we're adding?
But it's not part of, it's not part of the conclusions.
Right, okay.
And I just want to know for the record that what's currently listed as medical on the plan, however, was not approved, we're actually approving the basement level.
But no, 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 you don't, you don't know that. You don't know that.
Well, we do know that only 10,200 square feet.
No, because there could have been existing medical already. This was an existing building before 2004.
It was existing medical, that's what it says.
And the zoning allowed for medical and office use. So that, you, we have to take a step back and look, medical, an approved use in the zone.
I understand that.
This is a very specific condition of this resolution, so it's not even really a variance, it's an amendment of a condition. Yes, there is a variance for parking because they're, they want to add more, more medical office, and it's exacerbating the variance that they received, but the restriction on medical is a condition of the approval. It's not.
So what is your suggestion for?
It's not, it's not indicative of what the approved medical use overall in the building was because the original site plan, they could have gotten a variance for, you know, X amount of medical already, and then the 2004 was adding 10,000 on top of that. And they could be, they could be under that total amount right now.
That was a messy one.
So that's what I'm taking.
Resolution was very unclear.
I think if Greg just identifies in the recitation what the existing medical square footage is, and then we take the mayor's resolution saying we're adding, you know, 5,000 plus or minus square feet of additional medical restricted to a physical therapist's office, then I think that, that clarifies the record.
Agreed.
Agreed.
So I'm saying from the.
Well, I, yeah, but you were like, not going to even put the numbers in.
No, 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 it's just not part of the findings of fact, it's part of the recitation of prior facts, right? This was medical, this, this.
Okay. I just want it, I want clear because that, as you stated, that resolution was very murky.
Yeah.
Any other?
I agree.
Did you?
No? The, 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 the motion stands? Can you please take a roll call vote?
You're going to second?
Uh, yes, we do. Mr. Vice Chair Fresky.
Quick, does this motion include the charging stations or does not?
I wish there could be a couple, but I understand the fear of people parking overnight and charging their vehicles for free. Not that it would cost that much, but. Yeah, I'm sorry. Mrs. Parker?
Hi.
Mr. Heineman? Yes. Mr. Deal?
Yes.
Tom Manager O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Tamboro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fesche?
Yes.
Chair Pearson? Yes. The motion passes and. Yeah, close. I have to go. Yes, we are adjourned for a public meeting.
No, no, we're not going into it.
Oh, you're not?
I suppose I can counsel a little.
Thank God.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.